Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
There we go.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in
Okay, welcome on a chilly winter night, but it's nice and warm in here. Those of you that had to wait for a few minutes until we got the door open, my apologies. For those of you that are new to the procedures of the ZBA, the meeting is divided into two halves. During the first half, we hold public hearings on each of the applications that have been submitted to us. In each case, we will ask the applicant to come forward, state their name for the record, and be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA has to be sworn testimony. At that point, we'll ask the applicant for a very brief description of what their application is about, and then members of the ZBA will have an opportunity to ask questions about the application. When the board members have finished with their questions, the floor will be open to anyone from the public that wishes to speak about that application, but about that application only. And in each case, we'll ask the person to come forward, also to identify themselves for the record, and also to be sworn in. When we've finished hearing from the public, we will close the public hearing and go on to the next item. We're going to take the items in the order in which they are listed on the agenda. If you would like a copy of the agenda, it's available in this little tray that sits at the edge of our attorney's desk. When we've gone through all of the items, we will then go into the deliberation phase. And during this phase, because the public hearings are closed, there will be no more input from the public. We will consider each of the cases, and then if everything is in order, vote on the issue. If something needs further consideration or further materials, we might have to adjourn either the public hearing or the decision to the next meeting. We try not to do that. And during this deliberation, you're certainly welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations. If you wish to leave, you can call the zoning department in the morning for the results. Okay. If there's no other preliminaries, let's get started. Item number one, Nicole Hochberg?
Hochberg?
Hochberg? Okay.
You're getting there.
If I try enough times, I get it. 14 Greenville Farms Road. Okay, yes, ma'am. Please, yes.
Shall I stand or sit?
Just have a seat.
Okay.
Just state your name.
My name is Nicole Hochberg.
Ms. Hochberg, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, I help you, God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, and then, before you get started, I just want to make clear, there are actually two separate items. The first item, you're seeking a variance, and the second item is a special use permit.
Exactly.
And when we come to the deliberation, we have to take them separately, but for now, the discussion can be just both together.
Okay.
All right. So, what's your application about?
Well, I have a small chicken coop with six chickens, all females, so no roosters, in the town of Poughkeepsie. And we decided to get chickens, because I have three small children who are back here, who are interested in learning about where their food comes from, which I think is very important. Kind of a minimal amount of work to take care of these chickens. We were very careful when we were designing the coop, to put it in a place in the yard that was as far away from each property line that was possible, so we definitely took that into consideration. We tried to build the smallest coop that was appropriate for the number of chickens, and that number of chickens is the state minimum that you can purchase. So that's why we have six.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art, do you ever let the chickens run loose, or are they always in that coop that we saw?
We do let them run loose only if we're home and if it's warm enough, so it's kind of like a supervised situation. I mean, I think officially, you can let chickens wander.
Just curious, okay.
But we don't do that. And built into the coop is an area beneath, so that they can be kind of roaming around, but they're enclosed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you already answered one of my questions, which was how many there were, counted six, but you never know what might be in there. And I gather you must use the eggs that are produced?
Of course, yes.
Yeah.
We use the eggs. It's nice to not have to purchase eggs and to have fresh eggs.
Okay. Do you sell them?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. When we were there, the coop looked like it was in very good repair, but I did have it, and looked quite clean. I just had a question.
Sure.
When you clean it out, how often do you have to do that, and what do you do with the waste?
Well, you don't need to clean it out that frequently, because it actually can be used as fertilizer, so it's a pretty self-sustained operation. I would say every two or three months, we do clean it out, and we bag it, and we throw it away. So, you know, I'm kind of careful not to be dumping things anywhere, even though, like I said, that waste can be used as fertilizer, and often people use it in their gardening. But we don't do that, so we just dispose of it.
Okay. Because in the past, when we've considered these things, we've often included a number of conditions.
Okay.
And one of those has to do with the waste. And typically, what people do is either use it kind of in their own gardens, or take it typically to a farm, where they can just, you know, put it on fields.
Use it.
Yeah. And I don't know if there are any laws or regulations about, I don't know, putting it in the garbage, or what, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, I was, you know, trying not to dump it into the natural environment, but, you know, any way that you might feel, or that whatever regulations are in place in terms of disposal, I would be happy to abide by those.
Yeah.
If I'm doing it incorrectly.
Most people that I talk to say that the best way to do this is really to, in effect, recycle it, by taking it to a farm.
Well, it's like you can just do a compost pile, too.
You know, or a compost pile someplace, where, like you say, it becomes a natural fertilizer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I have plenty of people in the community that I know that are farmers, and I would be happy to do that, if that's what we think we should do with it.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay.
Okay. No one else has a question? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application, 14 Greenville Farms? Yes, sir. I saw your hand first, so... Oh, okay, okay. If you want to do it as a pair, that's fine.
Do I stay here?
Yeah. Or you could just return to your seat. We'll call you up if need be. Okay, if you would each just state your names?
Okay.
Bob Corsino.
Debbie Corsino.
Bob and Debbie Corsino, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, I help you, God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Yes.
Okay, yes, sir, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Okay. Our concerns, well, actually, this started March of last year, when the coop was being built, and my wife went out and talked to Kyle, and he said, "Well, we're building a coop for chickens." And we had a concern about that. And I called the, well, actually, my wife first called the zoning board, and somebody came out, looked at the structure that was there, okay, that they had just built. Now, this isn't an existing structure. This structure was built specifically for these chickens last March. Nothing happened, as far as we knew, so we called again to the zoning board, and this has been going ongoing. Our concerns, and the coop has been moved, after the first, I don't know who it was that came out, I don't know his name, but after that, the coop was moved to the back of the yard. It was originally right on the border of our two properties, okay? And then it was moved.
Okay, and your property is which number?
16.
16.
Yeah, we're right next door.
Okay. Okay, go on.
Okay. Our concerns are basically health issues pertaining to, like you had discussed, what happens to the waste matter and all that kind of thing. If it's not taken care of properly, it could cause issues, okay? The other thing that we're concerned about is, because of where we're located, we're concerned with animals that we don't want coming around, okay? Such as foxes, such as mice, rats, so forth. Because we're, we border the soccer field, okay? Between our houses and the soccer field is wooded area. And there's already animals living in that wooded area, okay? I just don't want them coming to us, going after the chickens, or to feed, or whatever it might be, okay? We did hear, not too long ago, matter of fact, a ruckus going on back there. We had just come home, it was about nine o'clock, we're getting out of our car, and you could hear the chickens were like, something's happening, okay? They were clucking and fluttering and everything else back there. I didn't go look, because, you know, I didn't want to go on their property, but there was something going on, and this is one of our issues, is that it's going to draw a bad element, as far as that goes. It's a residential area. It's not farming, and it's only six chickens, but six chickens is chickens, and they're going to draw things. We already have, in the past, and we've been living there 22 years, okay? We've seen foxes go by in the past, walking down the middle of the road, okay? We don't see things like that very often, and, you know, there is wildlife around, because you do see it occasionally. We just don't want it to become a regular thing. We don't want the chickens to be drawing those things to us, okay? Another issue that we have is what it would potentially do to the value of our property and the surrounding property. If I were to go try to sell my house, which I'm not planning to do right away, but if I did, is that going to impact me trying to sell the house? I mean, people come look at a house, and they'll go, "Oh, chickens? No, thank you." It could happen. It's a potential, all right? I mean, I've talked to friends of mine, people, you know, since last March, and, matter of fact, I was talking to somebody the other day, and I said, "Well, we got to go to the zoning meeting because of the chickens next door," and then they said chickens. I get that a lot from people, but that's them. I'm talking about me. I have the issue with what they're going to draw. I got an issue with what it could potentially do to my potential to sell my property, and if it's going to hurt me, okay? I know you have.
Well, my main concern, I've had Lyme disease, and all the animals coming toward that come through my yard. Do they have ticks on them? Sure they do. Are they going to fall off in my yard? I mean, that's Nicole, she said, chicken feed ticks. Well, that's when they're in her yard, not my yard. That's my concern.
My main concern with the element that they're going to draw. And down the road, I don't know what the rulings are on these things, okay, but my concern is that if they were to get a variance, and they were allowed to have these chickens, what if the next step is making a bigger coop and having more chickens, you know? And the other part of it is, if they're allowed to do this, then that opens the door to the rest of the neighborhood. Because if somebody three houses down the other way says, "Oh, I see that they got chickens. I want to do that, too, because I don't want to have to pay for eggs anymore." Are they going to be allowed to do it? And then is it now going to become more of an issue in the future? That's a big concern with me. Once you let somebody do something in one place, how are you going to say no to the next person that's going to want that same thing? Now you could potentially run into a problem, a bigger problem, which is a lot of what we're thinking. You know, when you say six chickens, it doesn't sound like much, okay? But what about later on? That's why we have the laws that we have. That's why the zoning law is there. We're a residential neighborhood. We're not farmland, okay? Now, my understanding is that you need to have at least five acres to be able to have chickens and so forth, or anything like that? I mean, we're on half acre, maybe three-quarter acre lots, okay? The zoning laws are made for a reason, and I believe we should stick to it. I mean, I'm not trying to deprive our kids from learning about the, you know, environment and, you know, all that stuff. I'm all for education, but I don't think this is the area to do it. And that's basically what my concerns are.
Okay, okay, thank you. Anyone on the board have any questions? Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience?
In the back.
Okay, yeah, okay, way in the back.
Hi, good evening, I'm Paula Young, how are you?
Hi.
Ms. Young, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, I help you, God?
I affirm, too, yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Thank you.
Now you can go.
I didn't expect to speak, but I have had backyard hens in multiple communities for multiple years. I just wanted to address two things. I was a licensed wildlife rehabilitator in New York State for 25 years, and there are foxes, and there are all sorts of wildlife, and they've become urban wildlife. Foxes eat mostly mice and rats and cats. They don't really eat hens, especially hens that are cooped up. Foxes will take prey that's easily gotten. And as for the women with Lyme disease, that's an awful situation, but chickens do eat ticks, and most chickens that are let out in the morning will always come back to roost at sunset. So if they did go in her yard, they would eat the ticks. And one more thing, mostly it's deer ticks, and deer ticks are not commonly found on wolves, foxes, or those types of canids. That's all I wanted to say.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right. Let's see, I believe there was someone else. Yes, sir. And your name?
Hi, my name is Keith Jemcouga. I'm the owner of 12 Greenville Farms. It's a property...
Over here. Could you say your name for me again?
Oh, sure, it's Keith Jemcouga.
Mr. Jemcouga, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths, I help you, God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
I understand, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
My name's Keith. I own the property that's immediately to the right of 14 Greenville Farms Road. It's 12 Greenville Farms Road. I share many of the same thoughts as the prior person who was up here, but some of the additional thoughts, things I'm concerned about, on my property, there's a cat and a dog. They're domestic animals, but, you know, dogs will be dogs, cats will be cats. If there's chickens and hens there, you know, am I going to be liable if they kill the chickens? Am I going to be liable if they destroy the eggs? I mean, how do you separate these animals on such a small property? I know the property, and the agenda says .79 acres, but if you go back there, it's, the usable land is really like .3, .4. I don't know the exact measurement. The rest of it is whatever, 50-foot drop-off into Greenville Park. Other things I'm worried about, I know they mentioned Lyme disease, you know, mice are attracted to chicken feed. I'm worried about the dog, or the cat, or even the two kids. There's a, I believe it's a two-year-old and a six-year-old. I don't physically live at the property. I'm just the owner of the property. You know, these animals, what is it? Chicken waste can foster things like, what is it, salmonella? I mean, heaven forbid, avian flu, or something that the kids pick up, you know, that the animals pick up, they pass on to the kids, especially if the waste is not cleaned routinely, if you leave it out there for months. The prior person just said, what is it? Foxes eat cats. Like, I don't want a fox near the property where there's a cat. You had been out to the property. The other thing I'm concerned about, liabilities, you know, that's my main concern. How much liability am I going to take on if the animals or the kids at my property get sick or hurt, or the animals at my property hurt the animals at that property? There's no fence there. I have no fence. I don't have a plan to put in a fence. Sorry, my mouth is really dry here. You had been out to the property. You know, I'm concerned about the liability for me and the family that's there. I did have another question. There's a pipe behind the backyard there. It's the water drain off for the entire street. What is it? It's a 24-inch diameter. I don't know the exact measurement. The water rolls down into the Greenville Park. What's going to be done to prevent any chicken waste from flowing into the park? And I know I shouldn't be worried about that, but I think that brings about a public safety issue. I mean, quite frankly, I don't think any property along Greenville Farms should have any livestock. It's just not safe. That's where you have the, you got the summer camps there, you got the soccer camps there, you got kids. That tree line, I brought some pictures. I don't know if you want to see them, but the tree line along the playground there, that's the only area of shade. That's where the kids sit and play. That's where they run around in the dirt. I'm just concerned about my liabilities, but, you know, this is a concern. If you're going to approve this, I think you really ought to do something about the water drain off there. When it rains, it looks like a waterfall, it pushes everything down. I put a lot of my debris in the back to prevent much of the erosion in my backyard. I mean, these are my concerns. I'm also concerned about other animals. They mentioned a few. We get garden snakes. We get mice back there. It's a wooded area. It's not a big, flat, open area where you normally have a chicken house.
Okay. If you have a picture, you want to leave it, we'll add it to the record?
I didn't think these pictures, they're right off of Dayton.
Okay.
This is just to show the proximity of the houses.
Yeah, okay.
And this is just to show you, you know, the park, where I was.
Yeah, yeah. No, we have all been out there, and, yeah, it drops off very steeply, and it's really heavily wooded, yeah. Okay.
And you have a waterway back there.
Do you have questions, Randy?
Okay. Any questions from board members?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Before the chickens came, you were all saying that you've seen foxes, et cetera, right? So the chickens have made no difference?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Can I come back out there?
Yeah, please.
I think the point that we're trying to make is that because of where we live, okay, you mean, you've got your backyard, and like Keith said, even though it says you might have .7 or .6, or whatever it might be, the actual area is smaller than that, and then it drops off down a hill, okay? There is a wooded area, all right? Matter of fact, the gentleman that came by when I was there once, okay, he even said to me, he goes, "Well, you know, the thing is," he goes, "that's backed right up to the wooded area in our backyards," okay? The potential is there to draw animals, or whatever wildlife is in that area, to us. Yes, we've been, I've been here 22 years. Yeah, we've seen foxes. I mean, they're not, you might see one once in a while, and I, you know, it's not like we see them all the time, all right? But they're around. We got deer that come through our yard, because we live on that wooded area there, right behind our houses, okay? It's like a forest back there. And then it drops down, and then there's a soccer field, and there's more woods around that, okay? The point that we're trying to make is not the fact that I've seen a fox in the time that I'm living there. We don't want those animals to be drawn to us, okay? That's what we're trying to get at here, whether it be a fox, or some other, you know, mice, rats, whatever, okay? We don't want that element coming to us.
Okay.
That's, I don't know if I'm answering your question, but is that kind of what you're getting at?
I'm getting at the fact that all these creatures, if you will, exist there already.
I don't want more of them coming.
Do you have pets? There are pets next door, so I'm assuming that the food is drawing animals. The gentleman was concerned about the waste run off if the dogs or cats are in the yard. Question for the last gentleman. Do those people clean up all their dog waste, so it's not running through the soccer field? I'm just trying to differentiate the differences.
I understand what you're trying to, what you're telling me.
That's all in my own mind.
I understand your question, okay? Look, I might have seen a fox. We've been here 22 years. We might have seen two, three, over 22 years, okay? It's not a common occurrence. It's not like we have these animals coming through our backyard every other day, okay? My point is, I don't want them visiting us more often.
Thank you.
Okay, that's what I was getting at, okay? And one other thing I wanted to address, too, that I didn't mention before. In the letter that we were sent, there's some reference there about an existing structure or something. I just want to make it known that the chicken coop was not an existing structure prior to this, okay? It wasn't there before. It was built for the chickens, so it's not an existing structure.
Okay, that language is simply so that everybody knows that this is about that particular structure, not some future one.
Right.
That's the distinction that's trying to be made here. It's, you know, this, that language in no way suggests that it's been approved.
All right, I'm just saying, the way I, you know...
Yeah, no, I got it.
You can read something three different ways, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
But I just wanted you to know it's on my mind, and that according to, for that particular coop, that chicken coop, okay? That was not an existing structure. In other words, it's a building that was there, and now we want to put chickens in it? No. The building was built for that purpose.
Okay, okay.
All right, that's all I'm getting at.
That's fine, okay. Any other questions here from the board? Okay. Okay, all right. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the application of fourteen Greenville? Yes.
I don't have anything new. I just want to give my support.
Would you just state your name and be sworn in and then just?
My name is Gwendolyn J. Glasgow.
Ms. Glasgow, oh, comes a gentleman.
My husband.
Mr. and Mrs. Glasgow, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I hope you got it.
We do.
Please be.
I do.
I do too.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Well, I'm glad we got that cleared out.
Yes.
Very good. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I have lived, we have lived, we, we have lived for thirty-six years in a beautiful, residential, lovely area. And all of our neighbors, we all get along and we just enjoy the beautiful safety and pleasant surroundings of the neighborhood. And I just want it to stay that way.
Okay.
I hope I stay there a lot longer. And if I don't, the house will be sold. If we don't, the house will be sold. And that's all my concern to all of you, to think of your neighborhood and how much you want to preserve it.
Okay.
But all the other items that Bob has spoken of and Keith has spoken of, I support.
Okay.
I just want to reiterate what Bob said about the law. This, the fact that you should have five acres of land for this, for this reason, I can't see gutting that down to less than one, because if you do, almost every house in that area meets that criteria. And that means that everybody could bring in horses, cows, chickens, who knows?
No, it's not, no, no. And there probably are a lot of people in the town having chickens that you don't even realize are there.
I don't have a big problem with chickens. I have a problem with what, if you take that apart, that law.
I think personally, I feel that the code was meant for big animals, big farming, maybe a chicken farm. To put six chickens in a backyard to teach a child is a whole different thing.
It's still, it's against what it should be.
Well, that's why this board is here. That's exactly why this board is here.
I understand that.
Right.
But if we don't follow these laws, we shouldn't have.
The object or the function of this board is to grant relief from inordinance when this board feels that it's justified. So that, I mean, we're not here to keep the law. That's what the zoning administrator does. We're here to grant relief. But, I mean, the legal counsel may be able to give you a better description, but that's technically what we're here for.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Anyone else in the audience? Okay, oh, yes. Okay, state your names, please.
Colleen McCarthy.
And Daniel McCarthy.
Mr. and Mrs. McCarthy, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I hope you got it.
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York. I don't really have much, well, anything else to say that hasn't already been said.
But I will tell you that where we, we lived here for twenty-two years also. Where we lived before this, from the curb, the house next door was great. But when people would go in the back rooms of our house and looking just out and they would see the unkept yard next door, we put up a stockade fence. It was only a four-foot fence, but when we were out in the backyard, it blocked our view. But it didn't block the view from anybody that was looking out to see what the rest of the neighborhood looked like. What someone else does on their property or what they don't do as far as upkeep or anything affects your property when you're trying to sell it. And I'm very concerned. We pay very high taxes. I'm just concerned if, you know, if it would have the potential to bring down our property value. And we work too hard to keep things the way they are. And I just don't want to do anything to risk it.
Okay. I guess from my perspective, the only thing, I have no issue with chickens, but I do have an issue with a sense of a precedent being set. If you are granting exception, you virtually have to grant it to anybody else who goes along and says for the same thing. And by the same token, then the property values may be impacted by that. We're kind of isolated where we are because even though we're in the middle of the, we have a larger property and aren't impacted by that, but we do have to be concerned about the overall neighborhood as, in general. So from the sense of the precedent, I worry about that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Any other questions from the board? I don't know, do the applicants want to, do you have anything further to add?
Come up to the.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess I would just like to say that I understand and I hear everyone's concerns, but I think that a lot of the concerns could be, you know, disqualified with research that has been done in terms of, you know, attracting predators. I mean, we were very careful to make sure that the coop was secure. There's no food outside. So, I mean, I don't necessarily think that us having six chickens is drawing more wildlife into the neighborhood. I also work very hard and I pay high taxes and I'm not trying to, you know, disturb anyone's life. And I just would like to be able to have our own life in our home and property where I live in my neighborhood also. So, that's all. And thank you for your consideration. And I do appreciate everyone's opinion. And I think it's nice that we all get to say what we think.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, is, if there's nothing, no other questions in the audience? There's a motion to close the public.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousels? Do I, do we need to do this for both items, one and two?
I assume from your earlier statement that we opened the public hearing for both and closed the public hearing just now for both.
That was, that was the intent. Okay, thank you. All right. So that brings us to item three. Brett Bashant, twenty-seven Memory Lane?
How you doing?
Hi.
I'm Grant Folks from Folks Builders.
Mr. Folks, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I hope you got it.
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, before you start, I need to clarify something because when I was out and spoke to you, there were a couple of things I didn't understand. And I had a conversation with the zoning administrator. So those of you that have your packets in front of us, if you would turn to the, it's the, I guess, survey on which is located the outline of the structure you're building, okay? Now, first of all, it's on a corner, so that means there are two front yards. So as you're looking at the map, the, one of those front yards is along Memory Lane. That's to the north. And the other front yard is to the east, Winnie Lane. Okay, the property line that's to the south, the long one that's horizontal on the diagram, the zoning administrator has determined that that's a side yard. And she determined this by looking at how the developer laid out the buildings. That means that the slanted line to the left on the west side is a rear yard, okay? Now, what all that means is that the house, as it is being built, in the footprint that it's on right now, meets both the side yard and the rear yard setbacks. So there's no problem with side and rear. However, so in the, in the statement, it refers to the rear yard. Well, you don't need that. What we need a variance for is for the front yard. And here, if you, if you look closely, the corner of what I think is the garage.
Yes.
That comes out, is twenty-four point five feet from the front yard.
Property line.
Property line, okay. It's actually much further to the pavement.
Right.
Okay, because actually.
Yeah, for some reason.
Yeah, for some reason, the, yeah.
It's bigger than half of the front.
Right, every once in a while, we run into these where, in effect.
Right.
The occupant is doing the town a favor by mowing the town's lawn.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. All right, which means then that what we're talking about here is a variance to allow an existing house to be located twenty-four point five feet from the front lot line where thirty feet is required. So in other words, they need a variance of five point five feet, which is actually less than what is stated.
Technically, five feet, five inches, but yes.
Five feet, five inches? I stand corrected. Five feet, five inches, okay.
Or five feet, I guess, five feet, seven inches if it's point five, twenty-four point five feet. Or is it, is that meant to be a half a foot or is it meant to be six?
No, no, it's meant point five, twenty-four point five feet is twenty-four and a half feet.
Okay.
Correct.
So then we.
Five and a half feet would be the variance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right, we, all right, we got that one. We got that one settled, okay? So, all right, so I just, I just wanted to clear that up for everybody on the board. It, the, I, I was simply confused about what constituted a side lot line and a rear lot line. And when I looked at it, I assumed that behind the house was going to be the rear lot line and that did need a, would have needed, but it doesn't.
Right.
Okay, so, long, long explanation, short.
Okay.
Tell us.
So basically, this house burned down April twenty-ninth of last year. When we went to rebuild the house and sent the plans in, the rear left corner of the home was too close to the property line. It was, I believe, nineteen feet and we needed twenty feet at the time, we were told. So what we actually did was we removed the foundation and everything and to not touch the septic and fields and stuff to try and get these people in the house as soon as we could, we just kind of rotated it counterclockwise a few degrees to get our clearance there. I had assumed, being fifty-plus feet off of the road, that I was at least my thirty feet from the property line. Come to find out, the property line cuts right through the front yard and does this huge dip in there for some reason. And that's basically where we're coming to the problem. So the five feet that we would gain the variance for, we'd still probably have another almost twenty feet from that point to the actual street. So it's, it's not, you know, going to be five feet into the road or what, you still have about twenty feet past that point till you get the pavement.
Okay, good, good. All right, Christine, any questions?
Questions.
And Betty?
No, no questions.
All right.
No questions.
And we've, you've heard from me. Hang on, hang on. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application twenty-seven Memory Lane? Okay, so, here we go. Yes.
My name is Steven Blake.
Can I share with him?
Sure.
I'm Lisa Blake.
Mr. and Mrs. Blake, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I hope you got it.
Yes.
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Originally, we came because we thought there was a problem with the rear yard. And I measured it and I was like, I couldn't understand, you know, I didn't know if it was a deck, if they were putting another addition back there.
Somehow, somehow it got messed up, front yard, backyard, I mean, somehow that happened.
We didn't realize it was the garage because the garage is already existing now. So we didn't realize that was.
But, all right, so, but it's, but it has to do with the front of the lot, not the rear.
Yeah.
Okay, we just didn't know, because our bedroom's on its side and we didn't know what was going on.
The error was mine. It was largely typ, not entirely typographical, but it was front versus back. But since it was advertised for needing less, just so that you know and anyone in the audience and the public knows, no changes are being proposed to the footprint of the building at all. There's, it's all just to approve what's already there, which is not in accordance with the setbacks that are required. So there's no additions being proposed.
Okay.
You're on the left side of the property line?
We've been on the left, yeah.
Yeah, so we were nineteen, now we're twenty-eight, so we're actually almost ten.
And we, we thought maybe there was going to be a deck there and we didn't care about that except, you know, as long as there's a fence maintained or something like that, we'd be fine.
No, it'll have, this is what's so confusing about it. And it has to do with these, corner lots, corner lots drive us crazy, okay? Because it's by definition, two front, two front yards. Because then, you know, so then what are the other two? All right?
Right.
All right, so in this case, it turns out, I think it has, has absolutely no impact on you.
Right, okay.
Yeah, okay, good.
Very good.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, anyone else in the audience? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recousels? Okay, thank you. Item number four, James Caffrey, fifteen Wilmar Terrace.
I'd like to let the board and the applicant know that in a former life, I represented the applicant. You have the right to waive and request different counsel if you choose, but I don't feel that there's any ongoing conflict. It was long ago and far away.
I didn't know there was ever conflict, really.
Well.
Sounds like a good song lyric. Mr. Caffrey, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I hope you got it.
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, so if you can, tell us why you're here.
I'm trying to do, I would like to do a second story addition on a house that I have on Wilmar Terrace.
Okay. And you've submitted drawings of that. And I notice that, at least according to the, to the material from the county, currently, there's, this is just a one-floor dwelling. There's, there's nothing upstairs?
There's nothing upstairs, yeah.
Okay, so that little gable that sits there is?
Decorative.
Just, okay, okay. So you would be adding, so right now, how many bedrooms are there?
There's two.
Okay, and so when you, after the addition, there would be?
Five.
Five, okay.
And I'm adding another bathroom, too. So there's, right now, there's only one bathroom. There'd be two bathrooms.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, so there's that part of it. Then I noticed there's a second variance that you're seeking.
Yeah, I was, I wanted to put in another parking area. Just, you know, parking's a problem everywhere. So I just, rather than have people park on the street, I'd, you know, I'd rather have a place where they can just pull in and park, just to add parking spots, you know?
Okay, all right. Christine?
So we were looking at the driveway. It looks like you probably fit five cars in the existing driveway.
You, you might, you might be able to, but they're, they would have to be tandem. So it's, it would be like a problem with backing, people backing out and like having to move cars and stuff like that. I just thought it would be easier to have the extra parking area. Because it's always like a pain, like, can you move your car so I can get my car out, that kind of thing. That kind of thing.
Okay. And it would be, is that in back of the deck?
It would be like to the left of the deck, well, to the left of the house, really. Like, it would be just kind of where the, the front steps are now. Those would be moved back. So it would go in, like, kind of where the end of the fence is, and then, you know, and then just be right there.
Right. Okay. That's all. Thank you.
As it's shown on the drawing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Hang on. Betty?
Um, yeah. Do you live at that address?
No.
No. And right now, it has two bedrooms, and you're gonna make it five?
Correct.
To rent it out?
Yes.
Is that the plan?
Yeah.
So you're gonna put three bedrooms in this addition portion that you're adding on?
No, that, no, that's actually the, that's actually the existing now. The, the part that I'm adding on is behind that, the second story that goes up.
All the. All of this? Oh, I thought it was just.
Well, the, the addition will be the second story.
Correct.
So you're gonna take off the existing roof.
Exactly.
Put in the next new roof.
Right. Just build up. Yeah. It'll be similar, I mean, most of the houses on the neighborhood have the second story already.
And it would involve clearing out a number of trees back there.
I do wanna get rid of a lot of, I mean, I don't have to get rid of them, but I wanna get rid of them, to be honest with you.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, I don't have to get rid of them for the construction or anything, but it just would be beneficial for me to be able to take out those, some of those trees, so.
Okay. I, it looked like some of the branches were coming.
Yeah, I want, I wanted, I wanna do a lot of work as far as to the lot, in terms of, there's trees between my house and my neighbors to the right-hand side, too, that I wanna, I wanna get rid of. They're just, they're not serving any purpose, they, they're threatening the house. So, you know, if like, they've ever fell, it would be an issue. You know? So, so I wanna take care of that, too.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, Betty.
That's, no, that's right. So what you want to do is, you wanna take the parking that is typically in front of the garage that's there now, and move it to the front of the building, the front of the house?
No, I wanna keep both, I wanna have both sides.
You wanna use both sides?
So I wanna have the, like, yeah, I'm gonna use both sides for parking. There's the parking in front of the garage.
Right.
Um, but, like, it kind of funnels, so it's like a one driveway that goes in, and then it kind of opens up to go to the, to the garage. So I wouldn't touch that at all, that would stay the same. I would just add three spots to the left-hand side, because there's a large yard to the left-hand side of the house, so I would just add three spots there.
And you're asking for a curb cut to go in there?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, like a 12-foot curb, yeah.
Okay. Um, you can go around, I'll keep.
Okay. Art?
Yeah. Question for me is, you're still gonna have cars lined up in that driveway, so what do you actually gain?
I'll gain convenience for the people that live in the house, because.
These is, to me, is the material.
I mean, it might be material to you, but for the people that live there, they're not gonna have to have three guys move, or three people move their cars so they can get their car out.
Surely will. You're still gonna have people parking in the driveway, so they're gonna have to move their cars.
Well, if there's three here, and there's two in front of the garage, that's, that's five spots, so.
I don't believe you can get three cars across in front of the garage.
I, I'm not saying you can. If I have three on the left-hand side of the house, and two in front.
Three on the other side.
And, yeah, right, three on the left-hand side, two in front of the garage, that's five.
Personally, I don't see to the detriment of the neighborhood, I don't see a net gain in doing another curb cut and more parking on the property. We've had issues before in that neighborhood. People just paving and paving and paving. Backyards gone, side yards gone. If, you know, not that it causes a rental, but if it's a rental, sometimes people have to live with the issues of parking.
Actually, part of the reason, I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry, but part of the reason I think it would be beneficial is because it would take away the necessity for people to park on the street, which nobody likes.
You're allowed to park on the street, as long as they don't, don't park on the lawn and on the draw, on the sidewalk. There's on-street parking up until April, and then after, no, up until November, then after April 1st, I think it is.
Yeah. I, I'm sorry, I thought, didn't you tell me they weren't allowed to park on the?
No. When I met you, and I did meet this gentleman at the house, you can't park on the lawn or the drive, or the sidewalk, was the discussion, because.
But they could park?
You can park on the curb, as long as you're on the road, you can park on the road.
Oh, okay.
Towne of Poughkeepsie.
I, I.
Towne of Poughkeepsie has a snow ordinance that's posted, and that's the only time you can't park on the road.
And when is, and how long is that?
November something to April 1st or 15th.
So for five months? But, so, yeah, so, I mean, again, you know.
I know where you're coming from, but again, we've had a lot of issues with, I mean, it's just type of requests in that area.
Really? Okay.
Yeah. Jim?
Okay. Um, I, I, I don't have a problem with the addition. I think taking, taking an older house, putting some money, investing in it, is what we want to see happen. I do have a real problem with the, the parking proposal, and, and my, my issue is, the way you've designed it, people would pull in, and then essentially, you have to back out.
Right.
Onto the street. But you have the house on one side, and you have a fence and a row of, of trees on the other, both of which really interfere with the sightlines. So basically, you're backing out blind into the street, and I think that's just dangerous.
But isn't, isn't that what everybody else does on, on the, I mean, everybody has to back out onto the street in that neighborhood?
It's not, it's not as bad on most driveways. It, it's, it's a particular problem with your house, because it's set so far forward on the lot. I mean, that's why you need the first variance. So in, 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 in this case, because of the very specific configuration of your lot, your house, the existing landscaping and fencing, I, 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 I can't imagine that the highway superintendent would, would even consider a curb cut, just, just because of those, those site issues.
What are, I mean, what are the minimum site is, like, what are the minimum sightlines that you need to be from the end of the road? Is it, is it violating those?
Yeah, this is not something, I think, that's in, in the kind of state highway code. It might be. I'm, I'm just not aware of it. But just on a kind of a common sense, I mean, do you really want, you know, somebody potentially, you know, walking down that sidewalk, and all of a sudden, this car backing straight out?
You're talking pedestrian traffic, okay.
Well, and, and, and cars, too, bicycles, I mean, anything. You know, it's, it's, it's why, for example, we, we rarely ever allow head-in parking anymore.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because, because when you go to back out, there's cars on both sides, and you kind of, you know, you, you, you put the car in gear, and you kind of, you know, put your foot down, and you kind of, oh, I hope there's nobody coming.
All right. All right. Well, so then, if I was to reconfigure, I have plenty of impervious surface, so if I was to reconfigure, I was trying to keep, like, the footprint of the parking lot as minimal as I could, because I didn't wanna go into the grass. But I do have room for impervious surface, so if I, if I were to make it so it could turn around, say it's like a 40 by 40, so people could pull in, and then back out and pull out straight forward, would that kind of alleviate those concerns, you think, or?
Um, I mean, I, I, I would still have a problem with, you know, that much additional parking area, but I was, so I, I, I agree with Art on, on that one. You know, when I was a college student, I lived in an apartment with four other guys, and, you know, we'd, we'd, we'd just learn to figure out.
And it was a pain in the butt, right?
It was a pain in the butt, but we were, you know.
And I'm, I'm, listen, they, they can figure it out, but why create a, a pain in the butt when we can easily just put in this parking? But if, I mean, listen, if you guys don't like to park, and you're the zoning board, it's your decision to make, I'll, I'll pull it. It's not, it just, for me, it was a convenient thing. And again, you know, you just eliminated a problem that you had in college that was a pain in your butt. Here we have an opportunity, you know, but to not make a pain in the butt for the people, but if you want.
But we dealt with it, and, and one of the ways that we dealt with it is that we walked to school.
Mm-hmm.
And it was a mile.
Right. Right.
Looked up both ways.
Absolutely. With a wind in my face.
I knew that was coming.
Um, you know, and the, the. On the zoning board, know that I've, this is a position I've had for a long time, you know. When, when I, when I looked at that, and there, it's a two-car garage, there are two spaces out in front, there's at least one, maybe even two more in the, in the driveway, in the narrower part of the driveway. That's five or six cars. At some point, how many cars do people need?
The garage, but the garage, I, I kind of use for storage, so there's no cars in the garage.
The other thing you could do is, is, is widen it.
Widen the garage?
Yeah. No, widen the driveway into it.
I can't really, though, because there's that big hill next to my neighbor's house that would create a.
Well, you, 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 you have partly, it's been, it's been widened in the back.
Yeah.
I know. It would be, it would, it would be another pain to do it, yes.
I mean, I, would I need a variance to do that? Because it's so close to the property line?
What would it do?
Hmm.
You'd have to address that when it came up.
I don't know.
Wider than 15 feet, though? Is there a maximum driveway?
Yeah, that's the other.
Yeah, it could, it, it could be, it's not 15 feet now, but I think it could be. It certainly is, it certainly is in front of the garage.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, in front of the garage, it's definitely 15, but like, where the, where the curb cut is, I'd say it's probably like 12, something like that.
Okay. But I believe our ordinance allows 15. So you could widen it to 15.
But I don't, but without a compass, I can't get two cars past.
Sure, you could. The sta, the standard width of a parking slot is eight feet.
I, I just know, like, when I, when I pull my truck into that driveway, like, I'm, I'm scared I'm gonna hit the house all the time, so. So it's, it's tight. I mean, it's tight. And I, like, in order to get another car to be able to go past there, I couldn't just go to 15, I'd, I'd have to go wider. I mean, you know.
Okay.
And again, I, I'm not married to the, to the parking lot. Like, to me, that would be like my ideal, the ideal situation for the tenants. The, I, I thought it would be good for my neighbors, because, you know, there was some concern about people parking on the street in the past, and I, you know, I, I just wanna make it so everybody can coexist here, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Okay. No, no. I, I, you, you, you know, your, your attitude here is, is very refreshing, you know? I mean, we're, we're just having an honest conversation.
Okay.
But I think that, the, the safety thing is, is, is my kind of key issue. Okay. But I've said enough. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No, I, I, I agree with the chairman on, on, on this one, because the, the existing driveway, it, it is inconvenient, but you know, we don't, you don't get a lot of pity from us on that inconvenience. Really. I mean.
Well put. Well put.
You know, it, it's doable, and, and they have to sit down together and kind of figure it all out, because.
Oh, it certainly is. I was just trying to create an ideal situation.
I, I know. I know. But is it gonna prevent someone from renting, because?
I don't think so.
They're gonna have to, you know, park the cars in tandem. I don't think so. No. But anyway, and, and as far as the addition is concerned, everything seems okay with that.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Christine, did you have any others? Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to address the application at 15 Wilmar Terrace? Yes, sir.
You want me to go sit?
Yeah, um, yeah, it looks like we're gonna need the, the chairs, yeah. Don't, don't, don't go too far away.
That's my son-in-law. He represents me.
Okay.
My name is Antonio L. Yama. I live at 70 Wilmar Terrace, Poughkeepsie, New York.
Okay.
Mr. Yama, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got? Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
That's my son-in-law, Thomas Lawrence.
Lawrence, right?
Lawrence, yes.
Mr. Lawrence, you are, please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, gentlemen.
Go ahead. Uh, I, I think, you know, in, in representing my father-in-law, who lives at 15 Wilmar Terrace, um.
For 45 years.
I would have to say that if chickens are a problem with property values, I think a potential college house next door is a bigger problem. That.
Five-a-bedroom.
That, let me talk.
All the talk that that we've heard here is is just confirming our suspicion that this is simply another college rooming house, um which Fairview is awash with and has created a variety of problems over the years and that the town board has has really worked to try and abate the spread of them as well as regulate the number of non-related tenants that can be in them. I'm not exactly sure how that ultimately wound up, but I think the concern my father-in-law has is that a bungalow house that was built probably in the twenties or the thirties, along with the rest of the homes in that area, the two-story, the second story is really going to alter the character of the neighborhood, frankly, um as as is evidenced by the house at sixty-one Fairview, which was converted and not very tastefully. It it's it's not just raising a roof and, you know, throwing siding on in a roof. All those houses have a degree of character, they're either of the four-square construction or colonial, they're or bungalow, they're um single-family homes for the most part, except for the problems of the houses that are on Fairview, which which have a variety of problems because they're rented out to college kids. And that's the primary concern my father-in-law has is that this is going to be another college rental. And what's that going to do to his property value? He'll take chickens. But uh, not to make light of the chicken problem, but um I I just think that that the zoning board needs to be aware that that they're taking yet, they could be allowing another home to be converted into a rooming house.
And those pine tree, they ruin my roof.
Well, so you'd like the pine trees out, right? Okay. Uh I I do think that, speaking about widening the driveway, there is a very steep slope between my father-in-law's property and that property.
Okay.
And a retaining wall probably would have to be looked at seriously so that his foundation is preserved.
Yes.
In order to widen it as as wide as would be recommended and safe.
I think you're right there, yeah.
Okay, and then um if if we could just have this, um it's a letter that he had asked for me to write, just to be entered into the record.
Okay.
I don't need reading, it summarizes everything it says.
Okay, all right, but this definitely be part of the part of the record. Okay, um just just so that you know, um the 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 structure of the letter addresses the um the questions that we have to decide. Undesirable change, is it necessary, is it substantial adverse impact, so?
It's a it's a step-by-step response to everything, the questions that are answered in the very answer.
Thank you.
I am a librarian.
I I'm well well aware of that. And thank you much for that very nice addition in the town of Poughkeepsie. Wonderful, wonderful.
Off topic, off topic.
Yeah, I know, I know. But I but I don't often have a chance to say that, okay? And we will um we we will take this into consideration during the deliberation, so thank you.
Okay, also.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address fifteen Wilmar Terrace? Okay, seeing none. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay, if not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item five, Rafael Dominguez. Okay. All right.
Speaking on his behalf.
Okay, and you are?
Al Verone.
Al Verone, okay. Betty, you want to?
Yeah, I was looking, do we have?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, forgot to look.
I Sandy just pointed out there is a letter authorized, yes, to Verone to to act on behalf of Mr. Dominguez.
Mr. Verone, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you got?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, so would you kind of explain why it is that you need a variance?
It's a variance for a garage that was rebuilt, torn down and rebuilt on the same foundation, but when he rebuilt the garage on the same foundation, there was a you know, couple-foot jog in the front left-hand corner of the building that he built out to make the building true, um instead of making it look, you know, uncustomized to the, you know, having a straight front to it. And that's really the only reason why we're here, because the laws have changed from the original time that the building was in existence to now. You know, to require a setback on the right-hand side of the building, which is too close to the actual property line. So if he built, if he built it exactly the way it was, we would still have the same issue regardless on the codes changing. So the only thing he did was, you know, where the adjustment was made was on the inside interior of the property, so it has no true effect to the neighboring properties. So that that's the only reason why we're here.
Okay, it's basically you've got a garage that's close to the property line.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art? No questions.
Okay, so so the recent construction was essentially to add that door that's there?
He just, he he, the roof was um, the roof in the building was kind of deteriorating because of the age of it. So he tore it down just to, you know, he's a perfectionist, so he wanted a new building.
Okay.
I mean, just plain and simply, he just wanted a new garage.
Okay.
Um and when they did that, they, the gentleman who actually built it didn't realize the, you know, the variation with the setback and everything, so you, you know, it's an oversight on somebody's part.
Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to address twenty-five Lewis Avenue? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recusals? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item six, Paula Young Boris, twenty-one eighty-six New Hackensack Road.
Let it read it.
Okay. All right, two familiar faces, but if you would each both state your name so we can get it on the tape.
Hi, I'm Paula Young Boris, and I am the proprietor of Paula's Public House at two-one-eight-six New Hackensack Road in the town of Poughkeepsie.
Tom Walsh, owner of Sign Language.
Um Paula Ivory been sworn in tonight. Mr. Walsh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you got?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, um another sign.
Yes, actually two. One, there are goalposts on the lawn of my property and I was led to believe very early on that I was allowed to put a banner there for things and I have been told I cannot, so I purchased a, I paid the fine, I purchased I'm not quite sure if it's a get out of jail for thirty days free thing from the the town, but that sign has to come down and I'm all aware of that. It's a banner, I want it to be able to know that I have happy hour and I posted that, so that's going to be coming down. And I don't know if that's what this is about, but I think what we're talking about is the sign that I installed an unlit sign that's twelve inches by fifty inches below my large lit sign that says gastropub. And the reason I lit it was because, knowing that I was restaurant and I probably should have put gastropub in the original sign, but I didn't, thinking that Paula's house would be clear and that people knew what a public house was. But it was brought to my attention that they didn't know if I was a furniture store, if I was a homeless shelter, if I was a house for unborn mothers. And as I was not quite just a bar, I thought it would be, I thought it was okay since the sign that I did put in was smaller than the existing sign I replaced to add an unlit sign explaining what I am, which is a gastropub. And I didn't realize that I was breaking any rules. It had been told to me by one of my customers who's an attorney, who I now find out is misinformed, that anything underneath the monument sign, as long as it's underneath and not as big, was legal until I got the notice, so. And Tom erected the sign, which is why he's here.
Okay, all right. Okay, Christine?
So what is, what is a gastropub?
A gastropub is where a place that prepares food that is exceptionally sourced and exceptionally well-prepared and served exceptionally well. It's a, it's, it came out in the nineteen seventies in Great Britain to differentiate it from just the usual pub food. It just shows that it's a gas, not gastritis, but gastronomically superior food.
Thank you, that's all.
Well, first course, yeah, the first question I had, you already somewhat addressed. If you, we granted a variance for the sign that you have, there's a lot of empty space on that sign. It seems like the easiest thing to do would have been to put that that message on the original sign.
Absolutely, and you're a hundred percent right. I really thought Paula's Public House would, people understood what a public house was. But I found that they didn't, they really didn't know. And that's why, after having numerous people tell me, what's a public house? What do you do? I I thought it would be best to just describe at least, and of course, then I put up two words that are even more confusing, gastropub versus, you know, I serve food, but.
And you recall that we had that big to-do about going out there with a big cardboard sign to make sure that you could view traffic both ways without your Paula's Public House sign being in the way. And then you went and put something that was in the way.
Well, only, you're absolutely right, and I did look at it with Tom, it's only a foot wide and we did, I didn't go with a cardboard box, but and I did look like an idiot doing it, but I was standing there and I had people drive that I knew to see if it was obstructing. So we did our own attempt, but anyhow, I'll let Tom take over here. I screwed up, I should have put it in.
And actually, you could have added to the sign that you have without coming here.
It's expensive. That little sign was expensive, just the two words.
Well, so I'm saying you could have put that on your original sign and not?
You're absolutely right, Ms. Bamba, a hundred percent.
I mean, you could add it now.
Um, I don't think that's possible.
Well, you have to make new faces.
Right, which would cost me how much?
I'd get a paintbrush myself.
I can paint it.
I have no more questions.
Art?
I have to agree with Betty, I mean, when you came in before us two or three times, I think, to get that sign, you knew how we felt about signs, you knew what the town ordinances were. This gentleman, in all respect, knows what the town ordinances are, he's been doing business with it on a long time, he knew better. I have no sympathy and gastropub to me, I just put restaurant.
Right.
To me, it means, I don't think I'm going to stop there.
The other thing is that I could just add, the gastropub sign is still, is still within smaller parameters of the original sign.
It's a second sign, you knew better. We went through that over and over when you were here the first numerous times, let's put it that way.
I will, I will, I will say though, I'm, I was not perfectly clear, I was not allowed a second sign. I would, I truthfully wouldn't have done it if I thought I was breaking a rule, I really wouldn't, I didn't think I couldn't.
Say one last thing, a phone call is very inexpensive.
You're right, you're absolutely right.
I'm done.
There's no doubt.
Okay, um I don't have a problem with the sign that's there. And you know, I, it's four-point-two square feet. To to me, this is a minimal change and you know, yes, if we were doing it all over again, we'd do it a little differently. It didn't, we are where we are. I, I'm I'm okay with it, but. Larry?
I thought public was spelled with a K.
That's probably what screwed everybody up.
An oldie Englandy, yes, see, it would be.
I don't have any questions.
Tony?
You know, I think the people that don't understand what a public house is, don't understand what a gastropub is.
No.
Exactly.
Uh I have no other, nothing else that hasn't been raised already.
Right.
Carmen?
Do your present-day customers, do they understand gastropub?
Yes, it seems like it's cleared it up.
Okay.
It's in the dictionary and now people know, and if they don't know, I think it causes them to look it up.
Okay.
Hopefully not while they're driving.
Haven't had any accidents yet.
Or texting, you know.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience wishes to address the application at twenty-one eighty-six New Hackensack Road? Okay.
Oh, there is.
Oh, there, okay.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
My name is Kirk Sheridan.
Mr. Sheridan, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you got?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Yes, sir. Hi, um I had appeared before you in an earlier hearing on this matter. Yes. In support of the original petition for the sign. And I oppose this application. You know, you went through considerable deliberation on the matter before, can't arrive at the decision that you made and I don't think it should be changed. The sign does represent an undesirable change because it's it's down in eye level. Yeah, I drive a pickup truck, it's right at eye level in a pickup truck, in a larger vehicle, it could obstruct the line sight into the parking lot. It's also not lit, so it creates shadows at night in combination with the fence, the trees, landscapes, the flag that's placed out in front of the house. You know, it all creates visual confusion for people driving by. So in summation, I don't see any reason that you should change your earlier decision. And I also have a question about the, since it was brought up, the temporary sign at the other end of the parking lot. The way I read the the issue on the, excuse me, I guess it's section one-twenty, or two-ten-one-twenty-four A, which is what this hearing is for, says that one freestanding sign is allowed and doesn't really stipulate a permanent sign or a temporary sign. I assume that one freestanding sign is one freestanding sign, whether it's temporary or permanent, and currently now there are three. Additionally, the temporary sign at the north end of the parking lot is thirty square feet, where only twenty square feet is allowed in a residential district. So I question why a permit was granted for that.
Okay. Okay, um any questions from the board?
Do, Jim, I'm sorry, but do we automatically answer on that last question? Does that sound like your question?
I I I mean, I
That's a temporary sign.
Quite frankly, don't don't know because not part of the application, is it? It's not part of the application and I know the procedure for approving temporary signs, which, what I think what Sarah does.
Banner, is that, is that a banner or?
Well, it's a fixed or permanent post that are in the ground, so.
Yeah, but it's a, it it's 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 not a fixed structure. I mean, it's a, if it's the one I think you're talking about, it it looks like it's on a piece of cloth or.
It's canvas or vinyl.
Something, yeah, yeah. Yeah, um I I know there's a procedure for getting temporary signs that that people do, I mean, car dealerships, for example, are are.
Yeah, but they're in zone business districts, this is a, this is a residential district.
Yeah. I'm 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 quite frankly, I'm I'm just not familiar with.
Two things on that, one, that is not, despite Paula's bringing it up, is not before this board because it wasn't part of the application process. So questions you really should direct to the zoning administrator or the zoning department on the temporary signs, but just legally, they're typically considered different from the permanent signs. The sign language, like the section that you cited, is typically only referring to permanent signs and temporary signs are covered by wholly different sections. But this board doesn't have any jurisdiction over the temporary signs, one way or the other.
Right, okay, well, that was sort of part of my thought was that if it was, if if you approve this application, would that apply then to the other sign that's already existing on the property?
No, no.
Absolutely.
No, this is this, uh this one is is actually quite limited to that specific four-point-whatever square foot sign and and nothing else.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Twenty-one eighty-six New Hackensack?
In the back, in the back.
Oh, okay, I didn't, didn't see, thank you, Art, your your eyes are better than mine.
Okay.
James Chacavelli?
Mr. Chacavelli?
Chacavelli, yes.
Chacavelli, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you got?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
I just want to add to the discussion that's going on. I was brought up about the concern of driving the gastropub sign blocking the view of traffic coming out. I enter and exit that establishment many times a day and there is no obstruction of view of oncoming traffic. I drive a pickup truck, I'm a little bit elevated. Basically, as high as you can go, but that that sign does not interfere with the line of sight of oncoming traffic, I just wanted to reiterate that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you. As far as the the temporary signs, those signs were, when we bought the establishment, it was it was explained that those posts were there for signs for special events and that's what, that was one of the reasons we bought the establishment and we were with the understanding that we can put up special event signs.
Okay.
So you're an owner of the property?
I'm Paula's husband, yeah.
That was a yes, though.
Yes.
You would think.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Uh anyone else in the audience? Okay, I don't see anyone, do you, or? Okay, good. All right, if there are no other questions from the board, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
No move, back and.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you, all right. Item seven, Herbert Rattle, six-eleven Duchess Turnpike. And this would be Frank Rattle.
Correct, Mr. Chairman, members of the ZBI, my name is Frank Rattle, project manager for Herbert Rattle Properties.
Mr. Rattle, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you got?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
I do. Uh first of all, Happy New Year, everyone, and I hope it'll give this board some comfort that we do not, nor do we anticipate having any chickens on this property. We're here about an existing sign. Six-eleven Duchess Turnpike is the old OTB building. There's a pylon sign there that's been existing for many years. Uh our investigation went back to the fifties, there used to be a Dodge dealership there, the Dodge Boys was there, and they're the ones that erected the sign. It's been there for many years, we're respectfully asking for a variance to keep the nonconformity. Your code under section two-ten-one-twenty-one permits a nonconforming sign to remain if this board deems it appropriate. With all due respect, we think that we we meet all of the statutory criteria for the sign. There's really no detrimental effect to the sign, it's not a new sign, the sign's been there forever. It's not a self-created hardship, when my uncle purchased a property a few years ago, the sign was there. It's not going to have any adverse effect on any neighboring property. We're looking, basically the sign is double what the code permits, we're looking for ninety-six-foot variance over the hundred feet. We had a new tenant move in there, Darkside Records, they moved in probably about a year and a half ago. We had a new tenant move in there, Darkside Records, they moved in probably about a year and a half ago, and at first, they were not interested in using the sign, and we have our canvas coverings over top of it, but the tenant approached us a few months ago, asking us to get this variance. They run into a problem, because they do have a beautiful wall sign on the building, but as you're traveling west on forty-four, if you're from out of town, and you don't know exactly where they are, by the time you see their sign, you're going to miss the cut-in to go into the driveway, because if, if you'll all remember that back in the seventies, when the state reconfigured forty-four, at that point, there's a fork, and if you miss the driveway, you're either going to go up the hill by the high school, and you can't take a left to come back, or you'll go to the left, and you're going to end up down Main Street and try to figure out how to come back. So it's important for our tenant to be able to properly advertise themselves. If we were to take down that sign and put a conforming sign up, it would create a problem also. The one base of that pylon sign is right on the property line. If we were to go down so that we're within twenty feet of the ground, that close to the building, you'd still have a problem seeing a conforming sign. That sign, with its height, does allow at least the visibility that there's a business there, what the business is, and you'd be able to be turning in at the drive, in at the sign, and that's why we're here.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions, I tried to move, make this thing smaller in my mind, but every time I try to do something with it, it looks worse than it does already, so. And just for the record, they sold Dodge Chrysler and Plymouth there.
Okay.
That's going way back.
I know.
Actually, I went back to my dad to find out the history of the property.
All right.
Big sign.
Yeah, it is.
But again, it's a lousy location for a sign, so.
Believe it or not, the square footage of the sign doesn't seem too offensive when you look at some of the other signs in the shopping district.
I do not disagree with that, but it's still a big sign.
Yeah, it's tall.
Yes.
That's, that's the issue, it's tall, the square footage of the sign itself.
Unless you tear the building down, you're not going to see another sign.
Right, that's exactly my point. Do you know how tall it is?
No.
Okay.
Honestly, I don't.
I mean, I went out and did some kind of field trigonometry, and I came up with a height of about thirty-seven feet, give or take a foot.
Okay.
This is not precise, but it, but it's, but it's, I think, a ballpark estimate. And I noticed that the code says twenty feet is the maximum height, so, so not only is the surface area of the sign large, but it, as you point out, is the height, and just for the record, I also checked to see if it, how far it was from the right-of-way, and that's not a problem, it's fifty feet back from the curb.
From the curb, yes.
And I assume the right-of-way probably goes in another ten feet, but, but if you've got fifty.
Yeah, property line doesn't even come out to the sidewalk there that goes up to the high school.
Right, so I don't, that's, that's not an issue, I thought it at first might be.
Okay, could you make it any shorter? Could you kind of like cut off the top panel?
The bottom?
You know, it's interesting, I don't, I don't know, I've personally been right at that sign. That sign is probably better made than the building, that's all steel I-beam welded together. We did some estimates on our own, on what it would cost to take that sign down, and it would probably be about five times what it would cost us to put a new sign up, just to bring it down, you could need a crane, actually, it would probably be quite dangerous to try to cut off the top of that, and not have it fall either on the building, or on another car or something.
Right.
It really, it, it's a challenge, it really is, and that's why we came in to ask that the nonconformity stay the way it is. You know, interestingly, if, the code pertaining to signs is a lot different than if it was a building. If this was a building, I could come before you and ask you to increase it twenty-five percent. Signs are treated a lot differently, even though it's in the same nonconforming status. But, you know, the town board had its own rationale when they legislated that, so.
Right, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair, one of the issues that the board's going to have is if we don't have any record testimony about how tall the sign is, we can't say what variance should be granted that's over twenty feet, and I don't know how comfortable you are with your trigonometry, but if we were to grant a seventeen-foot variance, and it were found to be taller than that, that would be an issue. I believe that the applicant was asked to provide the information as to how tall the sign was, and provide a sign permit for us, so that we would have that, those parameters, so that we would be able to grant the variance.
Mrs. Lane did send me an application, but I didn't know that that was the rationale for it, so I didn't complete the application. I would have no objection if the board prefers that adjourning this to the next month, and I'll get some, some more specifics as to the exact height.
Well, I think that would, that would help, we would know then exactly.
Yeah.
How tall it is.
I have no problem coming back to see you again.
Maybe if you could also provide us, you know, a rough estimate of the cost of, say, taking off the top panel. You know, because right now, there are two panels that have to do with the business itself, and they both make sense. And actually, they're actually, I kind of like the design, but the middle one is kind of a generic, you know, what is it, the shop local, think global or something?
Yeah, I always say, yeah, sometimes ten or three together fast, yeah.
Yeah, nice sentiment, but, but it really doesn't have to do directly with the business, so if you, if you shortened it a little bit, had just the two main business panels, you know, maybe that is prohibitively expensive, too, but if you could give us some rough idea.
I'd be happy to, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, then the other thing that I want to say, sort of, not to be completely negative, I'm a little bit familiar with this business. It started out as in basically a small storefront on Main Street in Arlington.
That's correct.
It's become very successful, they had to move essentially because they got successful.
They outgrew the space, yes.
And they're, they're a destination, and so you're absolutely right, people are coming, trying to find that, and that's a tricky traffic location.
It is, it is, and once you pass it, you're stuck, and if you are from out of town, you're not going to know how to get back. I mean, locals would know if you went up past the high school, you can take a right and come around Friendly Lane and come back out through the shopping plaza, but somebody from out of town's not going to know how to do that.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I understand the need for having a good sign there, but.
Okay.
All right, Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
That seems to solve, you know, several problems, if you were to eliminate the middle, the shop local, think global.
Yeah.
And I just don't think that, is that difficult to take that out?
I would have to defer to an expert, I don't know, I just know that the structure, the sign structure itself is all I-beam construction, it's welded together, but I don't know how the signs are affixed to it.
Yeah.
If I, if I told you anything different, I'd be making it up, ma'am.
Right.
Okay, well, so the proposal is we adjourn this, get a little more information, revisit this next month?
I don't mind coming back to see you next month.
Is that okay?
February thirteenth.
Okay, okay, so I move that we adjourn.
Before we do that, Mr. Chair, can you make sure there's no one in the audience that wishes to speak to this?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's true, so it's a public hearing, thank you. So is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at six eleven Duchess Turnpike, the Darkside Records? Okay, seeing none. All right, I move that we adjourn item number seven to February thirteenth meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, kuzzles, okay, all right, so we'll, we'll see you next month.
Thank you for your time, everyone, thank you.
Item number eight is the MRR Realty Group, one fifty-nine Barnegat Road. And as, as you're getting seated, we did get a response from the county, and let me just read this into the record, to Town and Pecosy ZBA, the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development has reviewed the submitted referral for countywide and intermunicipal impacts as outlined in general municipal law. Action, the applicant is seeking an area variance to permit a freestanding sign not at the entrance to the site. Comments, as it appears this sign would be proposed in lieu of a monument sign at the existing entrances, we are not opposed to it. However, if the board is inclined to grant this request, we suggest that as a condition be placed on the approval that stipulates the in lieu of nature of the approval. Recommendation, the department recommends that the board rely on its own study of the facts in the case, with due consideration to the above comments, sent, signed Owen Rafter, Commissioner. So if I understand this right, they're saying it's a local concern up to us, but they recommend that if we approve the sign, that there would then not be another monument sign elsewhere on the site.
Understood, understood, thank you.
Okay.
For that clarification.
And is that pretty much in?
That's essentially, you're familiar with the site, the two entrance points, it went from a single, you know, tenant there to now.
Okay, I'm sorry, we need, we got ahead of ourselves, your name, please.
My name's Paul Biker, I'm the president of Timely Signs, and we are here representing MRR Realty Group in this variance procedure.
Mr. Biker, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Understood.
Okay, so you were about to tell us the sign plan for that site.
Yeah, the reason, you're familiar with the site, the tenant has gone through the building permit process, essentially, it went from a single tenant, Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union had their headquarters there for many, many years, they have vacated the premises, sold the property, and now are one of four tenants on the site, so we have before you an application for additional building signage, wall signs, lettering, actually, and the freestanding sign, that also lists all the tenants at what we believe is the most visible point on IBM Road, which is that point of the property. There's no intention to put any further directional signage or other freestanding signs on the site besides what is in this application here.
Okay, all right, Christine, any questions?
No, no questions.
Betty?
Yeah, I was sorry to hear you say that you're not going to do any location signs, because the first thing that I wondered was why there wasn't some sort of arrow showing where the location of the urgent care or the medical group is. Because there, this sign that you want to put up is on a corner to nowhere, I mean, there's no way to know, that you have to go around, around the building, I mean, it's a long way from the curb cut, number one. So if I got to that corner, I don't know, should I go straight, should I turn left onto Barnegat? To me, I was more confused after I realized that you wanted to put the sign there. I don't know how the rest of the board felt, but it seemed very.
It's funny that you say that, because an earlier design of this had directional arrows on it, and the client opted out of that. But I can certainly revisit that design with directional arrows, kind of instructing a motorist to either turn left onto Barnegat or continue on IBM Road, depending on the entrance point. For instance, Hudson Valley Cancer Center, you would continue on IBM Road and make the left at the light, whereas urgent care and probably Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union would make sense to turn left on Barnegat Road and use that entrance.
That's an exit, isn't it?
It's, there's a one-way entrance off of that, off of that road that goes right into the front of the building.
First thing I thought was, oh, they're going to be back for location signs, I see it coming, you know, because. I thought if you got the sign, you would be back looking for other signs to put up, so you could show.
They're dealing with Sarah.
Okay, all right. Anyway, putting the sign where you proposed to put it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, because you can't find where you want to go by looking at that sign.
If we were to add a directional element and come back next month with, would that have any bearing? Or is that just an option that we could exercise at our client's discretion?
Well, I got to, I wouldn't know which way to go, how about the rest of the board? And you don't, if I wanted to go to the cancer center, unless I'd been there before, I wouldn't know, should I go straight down IBM Road or turn into Barnegat, because the sign is at the corner of Barnegat, how would you know where to go? Urgent care is even worse, because you got to go around the back.
That is correct. Well, I'd be interested in the board's opinion, actually, this is an outstanding opportunity for us to have a focus group on the directional aspect of this monument sign, and I'd be happy to report back.
Mr. Chairman, I ask you a question?
Sure.
They are in fact allowed directional signs on the property, I believe?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So that would take care of the urgent care, I think.
Well, I think Betty's point is very well taken, because you don't even see the directional sign until you've decided to turn left, you know, that would be further down the road, so, I mean, it is a very valid point, and I would like to bring that up to the client.
Okay, but, you know, we're talking about adding signage, per se, if you will, if urgent care, if it just said urgent care in rear of building on that red sign, that would.
They're allowed three square feet.
So. Right.
Yeah.
I'm just, whether we're allowed or not, I'm just telling you, it's not like, it isn't a plan that we are going to come back, that I know of. I haven't been asked to develop further directional signage, aside from parking signs, I believe you're, I don't know if it's the planning board, but there is a, is this separate plan that Optimus Architecture was working on, clearly defining the various parking areas for urgent care, cancer center.
Right, that's all the, the planning board, that's what the planning board's been working on, I mean, I.
Is the scope of this board to allow the sign itself, the size and the shape? It's up to you what you put on it, we're not in, we can't regulate the report and all that? So we can decide on whether the sign in this location is appropriate as a sign just generally, and then leave it to the applicant at some future time to decide whether you want to clarify where people should turn or what further information is provided.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would, I, you know, welcome board members to give their opinion on this, but as our attorney said, we actually can't regulate the content.
Right.
Of the sign.
I do appreciate your comment, though, because I do think it's important, especially for urgent care, you know, if you.
Well, I myself, I found that the sign to be quite useless, if, where you want to put it, because I wouldn't know where to go standing in front of that sign, that's why I raised it.
Yeah, I mean, on the other hand, though, I found it a good sign in the sense, if you're going down IBM Road, and you, and you know that you want to go to either urgent care, or the cancer center, or wherever, when you see that sign, you know that you've come to the right building. Now, it doesn't tell you how to get into it, and so maybe the sign could be improved by adding arrows or graphics, or visual, or whatever that would, that would help you decide, because you're absolutely right, you know? It's important to know that you've gotten to the right corner.
Yeah, it does serve as a destination sign, so, you know, you see the sign, and then you see the building beyond it.
But then the question is, okay, do I go left here or not, or straight ahead?
Whether you turn left or keep going, you will get there eventually, you know, it's a few hundred yard difference, but.
This, this sign, if I may, this sign, I think, does exactly what it needs to do. It identifies, like you said, Mr. Chairman, that building is housing these facilities. It identifies, like you said, Mr. Chairman, that building is housing these facilities. I think if you try to put any kind of directional element on that, at that spot, okay, it's going to be a lot more distracting than the Houstonville Fire Department sign flashing every three minutes. So the other thing is, like you said, if you go straight or you decide to turn left, it makes no difference whatsoever. I don't think I really want people making a decision as to what part of the building that they have to be in over the next 10 minutes when they're at that intersection. Once they enter the property, that's when the directional signs should take over and safely guide people to the right location, not while they're on a highway, traveling at a higher speed, trying to make that decision. There's two very easily accessible entrances. So I think this sign does an excellent job.
Yeah, duly noted. Thank you.
Larry, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Carmen?
And the entrance to the credit union now. I mean, that's a good place to have your directional sign, so people know, you know, if they're going to urgent care or not. But I agree. I think for the person driving down IBM Road, when you see that, it is clear, but then beyond that, you need the directional signs. The big complex in Fishkill is very clear. There's all those buildings. But if you're just driving along, there's the arrows. They're all there, and...
Right.
And they don't have to be big.
Well, let's see. I think the code says that you can have directional signs up to, what, three square feet? And is there a limit on how many?
I don't...
No. Yeah, so that, you know, so that at each of those different entrances, there could be a directional sign that would tell people, do this for urgent care or do that for...
Sure. Well, we may address that with the client, and, you know, if we end up erecting this... We get approval and end up erecting this sign, and people find their way without additional signage, then everything will be great. And if they have an issue with urgent care, we know that we can probably come back and get a three-square-foot directional sign and place somewhere.
So it sounds like we can go ahead and essentially vote on approving or not approving. I think I hear a consensus that in favor of it. It lets you put up this sign at the corner. You then figure out exactly how you want to design it. I think it's quite attractive now, but... And then you're free to put up directional signs as needed, but given the counties, we're going to condition it on the fact that at these different entryways, they'd be directional signs only.
Only, yes.
Yeah, there'd be no more monuments. Okay. So then I think that is...
Okay.
I think we're pretty clear on that?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, all right. Anyone from the audience that wished to address the application at 159 Barnegat Road? Okay. I'm seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Item nine, South Hills Improvement LLC, 1895 South Road. And again, we have a letter from the county. And let me just read that briefly. It's to the Town of Poughkeepsie zoning board. The Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development has reviewed the submitted referral for countywide and intermunicipal impacts as outlined in general municipal law. Action: The applicant is seeking an area variance to permit a freestanding sign not at the entrance to the site. Comments: The shops at South Hills maintain a very large directory sign between its entrances to Route 9 that is highly visible to those traveling Route 9 in either direction, as well as signage at its entrance at Route 9D, again, visible directions. The board should consider the precedent that would be set if it were to grant the requested variance, as other business owners could make similar requests that lead to duplicative signage along transportation corridors. Recommendation: The department recommends that the board rely on its own study of the facts in the case with due consideration to the above comments. Signed, Owen Rafter, Commissioner. Okay. So that is what we've heard from the county. Okay. So if you would each give your names and be sworn in, please.
Yes, my name's Nancy Forrest, and I'm here representing Glodey Signs.
My name is Patrick Consella, and I represent DLC Management Corp. and affiliated agent for South Hills Improvements LLC.
Mr. Consella, Ms. Forrest, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths that help you, God?
I do.
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay. So if you would just explain why new sign is needed.
Sure. Well, I'll first just explain, you know, who we are. DLC Management Corp., we're a third-party asset management company. We also minority owners, but we own and manage approximately 88 commercial retail shopping centers throughout the U.S., and then a few other, about two dozen, single-tenant, single building leases, like Walgreens, Rite-Aids, throughout the U.S. We own and manage South Hills Mall. We also, along Route 9, the Imperial Plaza, where Home Depot's located, as well as Alpine Common, where BJ's is located, and we also own a few others kind of down the Hudson. But we have a strong presence in New York State alone. We own about 30, close to 30 properties in New York State. Specifically related to South Hills, it's been a repurposed shopping center. Obviously, I think, I believe it used to be an enclosed mall. It's been redeveloped and repurposed into what it is today. Large national tenants, you've got ShopRite, Christmas Tree Store, Ashley Furniture, Burlington, and then some other ancillary inline anchor, I'm sorry, inline tenant spaces. The property itself is 581,000 square feet of gross leasable area. Currently, right now, we have about 150,000 of vacancy that we're trying to fill. A large portion of that is the former Kmart that has vacated, as you probably well know. You know, this property is above grade. The sightline isn't the best, but from our standpoint, we've put a lot of capital into this property over the last couple of years, and we're going to continue to do that to try to increase visibility to the center, increase sightlines, and just kind of keep the property well-maintained, landscaping, you know, parking lots swept, maintained, marked. You know, with that, one of the reasons why we're looking at installing a sign on this in this corner is to bring more visibility to the shopping center as a whole. So from that standpoint, trying to draw more people, more interest into the shopping center, and trying to get those vacancies leased. So for us, it's a package. It's the whole nine yards, trying to market, trying to maintain and manage the shopping center. It's very important to us in keeping a good positive presence in the community as well. You know, me personally, I've spoke to Pat Gallagher on a few occasions, and, you know, we have a good communication with Brian Coons as well. So we just want to continue that, and for us, it's a... We feel it's a real big need. This sign is, you know, we have a lot of money invested into this sign already, but, you know, a typical sign like this is probably going to run us into tens of thousands of dollars just to build. It's good quality material. It's, you know, it's a veneer-based brick design, and it's LED lights, so the draw on the electric obviously is going to be a lot less than your typical metal halide or high-pressure sodium lighting. But, you know, for us, it's aesthetically pleasing. It still kind of mirrors the architectural elements of the actual existing shopping center as a whole. So, I mean, we think it fits in nicely with the entire shopping center and, again, the entire package.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine, any questions?
No questions, just I think the sign looks attractive, especially because the...
I'm not sure the world is hearing you.
I'm so sorry. I was just saying, I think the sign looks attractive, and especially where it's situated, being that the plaza is above grade.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Betty?
I have the same comment as Christine.
Okay. Art?
Same. Same thing. Thank you.
All right. Larry?
Yeah, I agree also. Nice sign.
Tony?
Hand it off to Carmen.
There we go. You know, the existing sign at the light where you turn left to go into the South Hills Mall from 9D, I never felt that that was really a good location or maybe not a good sign, but I think this one is where it needs to be.
Thank you. So do we.
Yeah.
And I'd like to also point out, if I may, and I know a lot of us have been around here a long time, there originally was a sign for South Hills Mall on that corner. I don't know if you remember it. It was a big blue shopping bag. She's looking at me, because I had it. No, thank you, and I go back along with it, all of you. And I'm not, you know, actually sure if that had required a variance at the time. If it did, it was granted. And that was, if you recall that sign, that was more than two times the size of what we're asking for now. The sign we're doing now, not only does it look great, but it conforms to all the sizes. And, you know, you're coming out of Vassar Road when you head north. It's a pretty quick, you want to get into the left, so it does pinpoint, you know, that it is up there, like you said, above grade. And so if I'm going to take a left off Vassar Road, I know that I immediately want to put on my left blinker and get over to that side, because that's where the property is. And I agree with you, Carmen, the, you know, the one at the entrance, but that entrance really did not a lot in the middle to put something larger, more grand, and it really wouldn't have been appropriate anyway.
Exactly. Yeah.
Be more distracting, because you have one lane going, or two lanes going into one there. So it really is just... And it's not used as much, certainly.
No. I'm sure.
Unless you were coming out of Kmart.
Yeah.
Right.
So I think that original sign went down when the shopping bag went up.
The original one on the south side?
The one that was out front. I think they took that down, or they...
Minimized it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one on 9D.
When the shopping bag sign went up.
Yeah.
But you do need that sign where you're going to put it now. You need that when you come off of Vassar Road.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That was our feeling.
All right. My only... And I tend to agree with all these comments. My one concern is the question raised by the county. I think we have to deal with that, and that is, is this going to set some kind of precedent? So are all the other... Are other places up and down Route 9 going to say, hey, I need another sign too?
Well, I've been in front of this board on many, many occasions over the last 40 years, and my understanding is that just because you grant one under a certain set of conditions does not set a precedent that for everyone else to do it. We're meeting a certain criteria. We have reasons why we want it there, and one of them being coming off Vassar Road and even coming up Route 9. You've got three lanes of highway. If you're in the middle lane or you're in the right lane, that helps at the light. If you're stopped at the light, does the, oh, yeah, that's coming right up here. Let me put my signal on, give me the appropriate time to get over. So my understanding is that, you know, the zoning board visits everything individually and the reasons for it, and that's how they make their decision.
Okay. I mean, I think one of the reasons it makes this particular location special is that very high slope. I mean, from most of Route 9, Route 9D, Vassar Road, you really can't see that there's a shopping center
Right.
up there. And, you know, I'm thinking kind of up and down Route 9, almost every other place, you know, from Route 9, you can look out and, you know, you may not know the name of it. You need a sign to tell you where it is and so on, but you can see that it's there.
Correct. Yeah.
So that essentially would be the way... We don't have to respond to the county, but I think in, you know, out of courtesy, we take their point seriously, and I think this is a unique situation at that particular corner, which is a very, very busy corner.
I agree.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Art, did we give you a chance?
Certainly.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right. All right. Anyone in the audience wish to address the application, South Hills Mall, 1895 South Road? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kuzzles? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. We've come to the end of the agenda. Do we want to...
Yes.
Turn... Yes. Okay. I believe that was a subtle request for a short recess.
Can I ask you to do something?
Yeah.
Do the people know that they don't have to stay to the end of the meeting to, if they wish not to?
Yeah, I mentioned that at the beginning, but I'm...
More just in case?
Yep. Yep. Although I will say that our practice is that we will do the deliberation on the basis of who's here. So if you're here waiting, we will do you sooner rather than later. So we'll try to get you out of here as soon as we can.
Aye.
Okay. So we'll stand in recess for five minutes, and let's try to keep it at that. Okay.
Okay. Okay, would the meeting please come back to order? We're now in the liberation phase for those applications for which we've closed the public hearing. And as I mentioned, our custom is to consider those applications where the applicant is here. And so I believe the first applicant that's still here is number three, Brett Bashant, 27 Memory Lane. There you are. Okay. Okay, this is a variance to allow an existing house to be located 24.5 feet from the front lot line where 30 feet is required, so we're looking at a variance of 5.5 feet. This is in the front yard. This is a type 2 action, so we don't have to do any environmentals on this. And our attorney has drafted a set of findings, and let me just briefly read those. The first question, whether an undesirable change will be produced. The house was rebuilt on the same footprint as a prior residence, which existed for many years. Its continued existence is not likely to change the overall character of the neighborhood or cause any inconvenience or annoyance to the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some other method, the house has been reconstructed on the same footprint as the prior house. Alternative locations are not feasible for the applicant to pursue at this time. Whether the variance is substantial, the requested deviance of 5.5 feet from the front yard setback is insubstantial. 30 feet is required. The applicant has provided 24.5 feet. In addition, the house is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and other houses in the area, and was rebuilt on the same location as the prior house, making the requested variance appear even less substantial. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions, the house is existing. The use and its construction are otherwise consistent with the neighborhood and other changes and modifications that have been made to other nearby homes. The impact on the environment and neighborhood is minimal. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, the hardship is self-created in that the house was constructed having less than the required front yard setback. The relative size of the requested variance and the potential impact of the house on the surrounding property is not substantial. And the fact that the hardship was self-created does not preclude granting the variance. Okay. So any questions, comments on this? I mean, I think this is pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have to be scared of that site. You have to be scared of that site.
Well, yeah, yeah, we want to apologize for the mini coronary that you had. But once we figured out what the lot lines were, then it all becomes pretty clear. So Christine, you want to make the motion on this one?
Sure. I moved that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the previously mentioned findings that you just read.
Yes.
Okay. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings those mentioned determinations, items one through five. Second move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right. So motion been made and seconded to grant variance, front yard variance at 27 Memory Lane. There's no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Okay. Approved. Okay. Good luck with the rest of the construction?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next is item number four, James Caffrey, 15 Wilmar Terrace. This consists of two variances. One, to allow the construction of an addition to an existing house located on the front property, on the front lot line where a front setback of 30 feet is required. The second variance is to allow the parking or storage of motor vehicles in the front yard. Both of these is a type 2 action, so there's no environmental determinations that we need to make. Once again, our attorney has drafted some findings.
Are we going to do these separate?
I think we should.
We have to vote on it separately.
Yes, and the findings are separate. So let me do the first, which deals with the construction of an addition. Whether an undesirable change will be produced, the house is existing, the applicant is seeking to construct a secondary, second story addition on the existing house footprint, which is located on the front lot line, thereby requiring a variance of 30 feet. The increase in height while keeping the existing footprint is not likely to change the overall character of the neighborhood or cause any inconvenience or annoyance to the neighborhood or neighboring properties. Whether the benefit can be sought by the applicant by some other method, the house was constructed on what is now the front property line. Alternate locations for a second story are not feasible. A second story is preferable to a first story expansion, which would require a variance in any event. Whether the requested variance is substantial, yes, the requested deviation is of 100% is substantial. A setback of 30 feet is required. However, the applicant is not decreasing the front setback in any way, and he is not increasing the footprint of the house, making the requested variance appear even less substantial. In addition, the house is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and other houses in the area. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood, the house is existing. A second story is proposed. The use and its construction are otherwise consistent with the neighborhood and other changes and modifications that have been made to other nearby houses. The impact on the environment and the neighborhood of the proposed second story is minimal. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, the hardship is self-created in that the applicant is seeking to yield or to add a second story to a house that lacks the required front yard setback. However, the potential impact of the second story on surrounding property is not substantial, and the fact that the hardship is self-created does not preclude the granting of the variance. Okay. So on the issue of a variance for the front yard setback in order to construct an addition, comments?
Many, many people have put additions on other houses in the town. In this part of the town, a lot of the lots are small, the houses are small, and, you know, it's common to put on an addition. The problem here is that the original structure is so close to the street, it's right on the street actually, so that's what really, what requires a variance, and the addition is going out the back, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I was curious, I looked, the house was built in 1920, I mean, way before any zoning in the town.
A lot of zoning changes. Since the 50s.
Okay. Folks, do you have any sense of this? Yeah? All right, Betty, you want to make the motion?
Sure. I moved that the board approve the request for the area variance set forth in number four.
Four, variance number one.
Variance number one. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, the testimony offered at the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and based on the findings that you just...
Right, prepared by our attorney.
And in approving this variance, I ask that the board adopt the findings that you just related for the record.
Okay.
Second?
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the first of the variances in item number four, which would allow the construction of an addition on a house that's located on the front lot line. Any further discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye. Nay.
Okay. And recusals? Okay, approved.
Six to one.
Six to one.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, then the second variance would be to allow the parking or storage of motor vehicles in the front yard. Again, this is a type 2 action, and once again, our attorney has prepared some draft findings that we can modify or adopt. Is there an undesirable change? The applicant is seeking a new curb cut one side of the residence to allow for additional open air parking on the lot. However, the lot is, already contains a driveway leading to a garage on the other side of the residence. The configuration of the proposed parking would require residents or guests utilizing the proposed parking to back out onto the street. The board notes that there is a very limited site distance in either direction, making this maneuver unsafe. In addition, the board believes that the additional curb cut is not only not necessary given the existing curb cut, but would create an unwanted visual effect in this residential neighborhood. The board believes the existing parking is sufficient for the proposed use, and that the additional parking would create an undesirable change and be a detriment to the neighborhood. Can the benefit be sought by the applicant be achieved in some other way? Yes, benefit sought is additional parking. It is not clear whether this benefit can be achieved using other alternatives. However, the board believes that the existing parking is sufficient for the residential use of the property. Is this variance substantial? Yes, the variance is substantial. Parking is prohibited in the front yard. Is there an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions? Yes, the variance will have an adverse effect on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. The proliferation of curb cuts, in addition to being a safety concern, further detracts from the zoning goal of having landscaped rather than hardscaped front yards in residential neighborhoods. In addition, it is aesthetically preferable to have cars park only on driveways, in garages, or in rear yards rather than front yards visible from the street. Is the hardship self-created? Yes, the alleged hardship is self-created in that the applicant seeks to add additional parking to this residential use. The board believes that the existing parking is sufficient for the use. The ZBA notes that the fact that the hardship is self-created does not preclude the granting of the variance. However, the board feels that the alleged hardship is not so great as to overcome the detriment that the proposed change would cause to the surrounding properties and the neighborhood. Okay. So let me get a sense of the board here. I think most, I get a sense that most members are inclined not to grant this variance. Is that, am I correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And so Art, do you want to make the motion on the second part of number four?
Sure.
Make a motion to...
Yeah, so it'd be a motion to deny.
Really?
I moved that the board deny the request for an area variance set forth in item four.
Yes, four...
Four A, four B.
Four B, yeah, whatever.
This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and our discussion here tonight. In denying this variance, the board adopts as findings determination, there is no staff report. Determination is found in our discussions tonight.
Yes.
So move.
Okay, then motion made and seconded to deny the second variance in item number four concerning parking in the front yard. Okay, in voting on this, an aye vote is a vote to deny. Okay, so all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Recousals? Okay, so, that portion of item four is denied, seven to zero. All right, let's see, um, what's next? Item five here, I don't believe. Okay. Item six?
Twenty-five is here.
Or, or, five, for twenty-five Lewis Avenue? Oh, there you are, okay. All right, item number five, um, Al Varone, representing Rafael Dominguez, twenty-five Lewis Avenue. There's a variance to allow an existing garage to be located two feet from the side lot line, where ten feet is required, uh, a type-two action, and the, uh, findings, um, are as follows. Will an undesirable change be produced? The garage has existed for many years, the applicant has simply squared the shape, allowing the installation of an additional door on the interior side of the building. The change, uh, to the building does not impact or decrease the proximity of the garage to the property line in any way. Its continued existence will not change the overall character of the neighborhood or cause any inconvenience or annoyance to the neighborhood or neighboring properties. Could the benefit be achieved by any other method? No, uh, the door cannot be relocated to achieve the desired accessibility, alternative locations are not feasible. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically, the requested variance is substantial, ten feet is required, the applicant has, has only two feet. However, the garage is existing, and the intrusion into the required side yard is not crease, increasing at all. In addition, the garage is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and other houses in the area, making the requested variance appear even less substantial. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions, after review of the facts and testimony, uh, the board finds the garage is existing, squaring the corner of the structure on the interior lot will have no impact on the neighborhood. The use and its construction are otherwise consistent with the neighborhood and other changes and modifications that have been made to other nearby properties. The impact on the environment and neighborhood is minimal. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? The hardship is self-created in that the change was made to a garage having less than the required side yard setback. The relative size of the requested variance and the potential impact of the change to the garage on surrounding property is not substantial, and the fact of the hardship is self-created does not preclude the granting of the variance. Um, the only thing I would add to this is, um, the, um, the house was built in nineteen seventeen, um, and, um, way, way before any zoning, and almost all the houses on that street are on very narrow lots, um, most of them have a garage that infringes on the setback requirements, so, um, there's, there's very little in this application that will have any, um, impact on the area. Questions, comments? Okay, um, Larry, you want, you want to do this one? Here you go.
They should be the same. I move that the board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number five. The decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts his findings, the determinations as...
Read previously.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, you're, you're moving that, so, okay, there's been moved and seconded. Okay, any, uh, further discussion on item number five? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Approved. Any nays, recousals? Approved, seven to zero. All right, okay, let's see, is Paula here? No, she's...
Her husband is.
Oh, her, okay, yeah, okay. Uh, all right, item number six, Paula Young Bora, uh, twenty-one eighty-six New Hackensack Road. A variance to allow a second sign, four point two square feet, to be attached to an existing freestanding sign. This is an unlisted action for a reason I don't understand, but I move that for purposes of environmental review of item number six, that the Town of Poughkeepsie ZBA declare itself lead agency.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recousals? Okay, um, I move that the Town of Poughkeepsie ZBA finds, based on the questions listed in the environmental assessment short form, that the action proposed in item number six will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, uh, on the motion itself...
Mr. Chair, you may want to take a straw poll of the board before you read the findings to determine which way, um, the board wants to go.
Okay. Well? What's the feeling?
Are we allowed to disagree with staff reports?
There are no staff...
It's not a staff report anymore.
It's a recommendation, but, yeah.
Yeah, you can disagree.
But you follow, we, when, when we have staff reports, and I should explain, um, that the, um, zoning and planning department is short-staffed at, at the moment, um, we had, we had one of the planners that also worked with zoning, um, left to take another job, a very good job, and we wish him well. Um, and, um, Neil Wilson, the, the head of the department, um, has been out, um, his, there was a death in the family, and, um, so, um, we're...
Winging it.
The, our attorney, Lisa Cobb, very kindly, kind of stepped up to the plate and offered some...
So whereas the staff reports in prior were something that, they were a position taken by the town that the board could agree or disagree with, the staff reports that, they're not even staff reports, what I've been drafting is an anticipation of what the board might consider, and based on the discussions that were during this application, um, I was, it's not clear to me which way the board was going to go, so if the board is deciding, um, the staff, the recommendations were voted, were written to approve, if the board votes to deny or has a straw poll that, that's a denial is implicated, then there's no point in reading the findings.
Yes.
I'm, I'm inclined to deny this application, um, just refer, or deny the variance, just referring to the application, adding a small sign, clarifying the purpose of my business, I don't think it does that. I think, I think the confusion of the public is greatly exaggerated. Uh, name of the business does not clarify, or clearly indicate what it is, the small sign clarifies this, if anything else, I think it confuses it more than clarifies it. And I do think the small sign does present, uh, a little bit more, or at least the opportunity for, um, uh, a break in the line of sight, um, not necessarily if you're on a motorcycle or in a low, you know, driving a lowrider, but, uh, I do know that, um, I ride in a higher vehicle, and I found it to be a little bit distracting. And, um, you know, I'm just, I'm just concerned, uh, these, these things could have been addressed with the initial sign, uh, the word gastrop, or the words gastropub could have been incorporated into the, uh, original sign, and, uh, you know what? I know it's not cheap, but take down the two faces, the north and southbound face, and have, uh, the sign man redo it and include the words gastropub, if that's the thing that's going to clarify everybody. So I, I think this is, um, I, I don't think the applicant did due diligence, uh, and, um, they're looking for a reason, excuse to get away from not accepting that.
I agree totally, but, you know, I also find that gastropub, I think more people would be looking at that saying, what the heck is that? Not paying attention to where they're going? What is a gastrop? It's a restaurant. It's a restaurant.
Yeah, to my way you call it.
I Googled it.
And, uh...
I hope you weren't driving, Betty.
And, you know, you know, another problem I have is, you know, nothing against this establishment, but we have many situations where this happens, well, I'm going to put up another sign, just because, and we, we end up approving it, which is wrong, to the people that are playing by the rules and coming in and getting things done, so, you know? And the other thing is, the sign person, he knows better, he's been before us a lot of times. He knew right from the get-go that this was going to be a problem, so I have to say...
I know, I, I, I think in fairness, it was, it was, it was, it was not his responsibility.
It was not, but he could have said something, better problem here.
The decision was made later.
True.
Okay.
I would have to, I, I can't vote to pass this, this is...
And I think the applicant's done a very nice job at making it a very attractive property.
It is, and it's, he's busy.
You know, so as you're coming up, I think public health says enough that, you know, if you're, if you're so inclined, you'd want to pull inside and say, hey, let me find out a little bit more about this.
But word gets out, too, people know it's there. It's, it's happening, I think.
Okay.
Well, I guess I have a differing opinion here.
Real?
I'm good. She, she did not think ahead, uh, obviously, and went, went ahead and did things, so, those are two, two of the, uh, negatives here. The thing is, she's going to have to live with the sign. She will, uh, increase her business or not, I don't know, but, uh, that, that's going to be her, her problem, and, uh, I, I, I think we're, um, we're splitting hairs here, nitpicking.
Okay.
Okay? So I would vote to, to approve it.
Okay.
Inclined to agree. I'm inclined to agree with Carmen.
Yeah.
I don't really have a problem with it, it's very...
And, and I must say, I'm kind of leaning that way, too, because it just doesn't seem to me a big deal.
I think, you know, if the business owner thinks that that's going to improve their business, I mean, it gives a little sort of cachet to have that little gastropub there. I mean, um, leaning towards...
Then, what's, what's going to stop the next business owner saying, well, I can put up a sign because I want to, and it's going to help my business?
Well, I mean, I, I think, I think, I think there is a distinction. She came in to have the sign approved, okay? There are a lot that don't...
After she had the violation.
Well, yeah, but there's, there are a lot that, you know...
I agree, I disagree.
Illegal signs out there.
I'm a no, I'm with Tony.
I disagree.
Okay. Well, if I count right, it's, it's, it's four to three in favor. Is that right?
It is what it is.
It's what it is, but I think it's wrong.
Okay, as, one of, one of the early things I learned, um, being on this board, was from, from Betty, and was one of the very first meetings, and we were split like this, Betty just looked over and smiled and said, that's why there are seven of us.
Exactly.
So I think that, I think that's, that's where we are, and it's been, it's, it's been an amazing lesson. Okay, um, all right, in that case, let me read the, um, findings which appear to approve this, okay? Let's, oh, here, um, whether an undesirable change will be produced. Uh, in August two thousand sixteen, the applicant received a variance for the installation of a sign that exceeded the permitted size in the residential zone in which this property is located. At that time, the board approved, the board noted that this is a somewhat unique site in that it has been in commercial use for years, and is along a busy route with a speed limit of forty-five miles per hour, but the property is located in a residential zoning district. The board finds that this situation is unlikely to be replicated in the town and will not create an unwanted precedent. The property is in the site, um, is, uh, the site of a non-conforming restaurant use. The applicant is seeking to install a second sign on the same post as the existing sign, having dimensions of twelve inches by fifty inches. The board finds that, given the small size of the proposed sign, and its location on the same pole as the existing sign, and in the same coloring, black and white, the proposed additional sign will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefit sought can be achieved by some method, other method, uh, the applicant states that she would like to clarify the purpose of the business, a goal that is not achieved by the existing sign. Adding the additional language to the existing sign would be aesthetically unappealing and would make it visually cluttered and more difficult to read by those passing by in vehicles. No feasible alternatives exist that would not require a variance. Is the variance substantial? The requested variance, standing alone, is not substantial, however, the variants granted to the permit of the existing sign to be installed were substantial. Uh, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions, the proposed sign offers little change from existing condition, and will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? The difficulty is self-created in the applicant installing a sign that did not convey, convey the information she desired. The self-created nature of the hardship does not preclude the granting of the variance. Okay, um, given the situation, I think I will make the motion. Okay. You'll get the next one, don't worry.
I, I, that would have been interesting.
Yeah, it would, it would. According to some, it, it would be parliamentary.
I'm open-minded.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, um, okay, so, for, um, I move that the board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number six. Decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, um, and the, uh, findings, um, as, as read, um, written by our attorney. So move.
Second.
Okay, so there's been a motion made in second to approve the variance in item number six.
Sandy, can we have a roll call vote on that?
Okay.
Christine Sirocelli?
Aye.
Betty?
No.
No.
Jim?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Anthony?
No.
And Carmen?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, so, the variance is granted by a vote of four to three.
Didn't care.
Okay. Okay. All right, then, let's see, item seven is adjourned, uh, and item num, let's see, who is here?
Chicken.
Eight?
Ornegut Road.
Eight and nine.
Yeah.
No.
Eight is coming back.
One, one is here, one and two.
Is eight coming back?
Nine is here.
Okay. So we'll, 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 we'll go to, uh, nine. Okay, um, okay, um, South Hills Improvement LLC, eighteen ninety-five South Road, a variance to allow a freestanding monument sign to be located on the west side of the intersection of Route nine and Route nine D, which is not a, um, an, a entrance driveway. That? Is that okay?
Sure.
Stay, okay. All right, this is an...
I didn't do findings for this one, sorry.
Okay, this is an unlisted action, um, so I move that the Town of Poughkeepsie ZBA, uh, declare itself lead agency for purposes of the environmental review of item number nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I further move that the Town of Poughkeepsie ZBA finds, based on the questions in the environmental assessment short form, that the action proposed in item number nine will have no significant effect on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, on the, um, motion itself, um... Okay, um, on the, um, motion itself, um, let's see, uh, there is, there is not a staff report, um.
Actually, the, uh, application has pretty good findings.
Yeah, okay, let's see, um, where, wait, for, uh, number nine, really?
Yes.
South Hills.
Uh.
South Hills, you're not looking at Barnegat, are you?
No, I'm looking at, basically, I'm saying South Hills.
I don't, I don't see it in my packet.
Second page?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there it is, yes, yes. Um, excuse me, yes, um, uh, yes, those are.
Excellent.
Perfectly, perfectly good, okay.
Ira. Send him in the field.
Okay, so, uh, Tom, you wanna, you wanna take this one and use those findings?
Okay, uh, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number nine. This decision is based on a review of the application testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearings, results of site visits by board members, and the, well, we didn't mention the, um, uh, findings in items one through five, but, um, or as listed in the applicant in items one through five. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings and determinations, um, mentioned in the application, items one through five for this, um, of the application, I'm sorry, items one through five of the application.
Yeah, it's on pages two and three.
On pages two and three.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, um, motion's been made in second to approve the variance to allow a freestanding sign for the shops at, uh, South Hills. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, recousels?
Did we do enough to satisfy the county?
We did on the record and we incorporated it into the resolution.
Um, we, we're, we're not required to, to make a formal response. Um, but I think, again, it's a matter of courtesy, if nothing else, you know.
I'm not telling them that.
We, 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 we took under consideration their, their issue, and I think.
And then.
Properly.
Did what we needed to do.
Did what we needed to do, exactly, okay. Um, okay, all right, um.
Back to one and two.
I guess we're back to number one, and again, we have to do these separately. So, item one, Nicole Hertberg, uh, fourteen Greenville Farms Road. Um, this is a variance to allow keeping farm animals, in particular chickens, on a parcel of less than five acres. The parcel is point seven nine acres. This is a type-two action, so we have no environmental determinations to make. Um, and, um, we have, um, a staff report, uh, again, prepared by our attorney, uh, a, a set of findings, and let me just read those. Um, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The board conditioned the granting of the, uh, let's see, let's see, I guess the, the board, what, will condition? The granting of the variances on the applicant keeping.
Are you giving the special use permit first, as opposed to the variances, or did I not do them separately?
Okay, uh, you, you, you did, you did them separately, but I believe we have to do the variance first. So, that's, so, do we need, do, which one of these should we attach the conditions to?
Personally, I like to attach the conditions to both. I like to put them in the variance, and then when we get to the special permit, we reincorporate the same conditions. In addition to, um, other conditions that the board may have used in the past, I think for this, um, given the concerns of the neighbors, we should also include that any food that might be stored outside be kept in metal containers, um, but preferably that the food be stored inside, or at least, you know, a prior condition in other municipalities has been rodent-proof, so that there's no issue that the mice will get into, you know, something like a Tupperware that they can chew through.
Yeah, um.
They had it installed beyond the wood, it was built into the coop.
Yeah, the, 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 I mean, we can say that, but I, but I.
I mean, for the storage of the feed, not, that's not, not that the chicken are eating, but the, the surplus or the.
Oh, okay, okay, it's kept in, either in a container or a location that would be free from rodents, okay. Um, the other thing, and, um, and, and here, um, um, our attorney has, has told me, um, that she kind of based it on the previous cases that we've considered, um, in, in allowing chickens. And in those cases, I, I believe, some of them, we, we restricted it to, to no more than six chickens.
Yes.
The, the thing that we did last month, we said eight, 'cause that's what they had. We can make it six, we can make it eight, they have six, we could keep it at six.
Jim, the only thing that came up today that I never heard of, that according to the state of New York, you can only, minimum is six. So, should we not just keep it at the minimum?
No, I, I think, I think that is, um.
The purchase.
The purchase.
Yeah.
I think.
Why don't we just keep it?
And, and last, last month, we, uh, he was indicating that, um, two or three were leaving the home.
He's gonna eat them.
Right, you know, they, they were, I think, only gonna be ending up with six as their.
Okay, so, so, so then, should we just make the condition six chickens?
Yeah, why not?
Okay, all right, and in, in view of the comments that we've had minimizing the, um, and the other restriction would be no roosters.
Right.
Yes.
And then, uh, the disposable, disposal of any waste. Okay, we, we, I think, is there anything else? Okay, I mean, the, the, the new one, I think, is the rodent proof, but that's.
The, the last one, he's, he volunteered that he brought the waste to a, someplace else.
Took it to a farm somewhere.
Right, right, which, which is by far the easiest, I think, and best, best way to do it. Okay, so, let me make the amendments kind of on the fly, and you can, you can make the language better. Okay, um, the board conditioned the granting of the variances on the applicant keeping no more than six chickens, uh, prohibiting the keeping of any, uh, roosters on the property, requiring the coop to be, um, kept clean, uh, uh, and you've got the phrase, including cleaning at least once per week.
That was what the applicant had volunteered to do in the prior petition that we approved last month. So, that's where that came from.
Okay.
The applicant indicated two months is her standard, uh, the board can impose whatever conditions it likes. But there's also probably a.
Weekly.
Going, uh.
Do you wanna keep with?
You know, I, no, I'm not a chicken guy, but, uh, you know, I like to eat them, but that's about it. And I, I don't, I had no reason, the fellow last month was speaking, you know, with, I thought, some authority. Uh, I was a little bit shocked when she mentioned the frequency today, as, 'cause it was so dramatically opposed to what the gentleman mentioned last month.
All right, well, I mean.
Nothing wrong with cleaning your house once a, once a week.
Okay, okay, so, all right, so we'll, we'll leave it, okay. Including, including cleaning at least once per week, um, and the removal of all waste that is, um, not used in a garden on the property to a site outside the town, and the storage of food in a location or container that is rodent-proof. Given the conditions imposed by the board, the area variance granted to permit the continued use of the property as a chicken coop is not likely to change the overall character of the neighborhood or cause any inconvenience or annoyance to the neighborhood or neighboring properties. Whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method, some other feasible method. Um, the lot is existing, it would not be feasible for the applicant to seek to enlarge it to accommodate the five-acre minimum requirement. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically, the requested variance is substantial. However, the applicant has agreed to cap the number of chickens, uh, a prohibition on roosters and to regular maintenance, making the impact of the variance less substantial. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Um, the proposed use is existing, no adverse environmental impacts have been observed. The requested area variances will not result in any new construction. They will simply permit the building housing, the existing use to continue to be used. With the conditions imposed by the board, the impact on the environment and neighborhood is minimal. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, um, uh, let's see, oh, here it is. Uh, the hardship is self-created in that the applicant wishes to keep chickens on her property, which does not meet the size requirements of the town code. However, the applicant did not create the lot, the, the potential impact of the use on the surrounding properties is not substantial, and the fact that the hardship is self-created does not preclude the granting of the variance. Okay, so those are the, um, uh, a, a set of draft findings, uh, we've, which I've amended a bit as we went along. Okay, uh, discussion, um.
I would like to address the comment or the concern from the neighbors about drawing, uh, about the chickens drawing predatory animals. I, I would have to think that if there were any predators in the neighborhood, they would go after the three hundred geese that are sitting on the park, as opposed to chickens that are fenced in. The coop itself and the area around it is totally fenced in. I would think that that would be an easier mark.
Okay.
And secondly, um, there are many, I, I wish I knew exactly how many, but there are numerous, um, chicken coops in backyards in the town, um, for educational purposes for children, for, for age projects, for whatever, that go totally unnoticed, so.
Yeah, 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 I, I, I think you're quite right. This is, this is not the first, um, such request that we've, um, we've dealt with. And, uh, we've, we've generally approved these, um, with, um, conditions. And in fact, um, there's a, there's a, there's a proposal floating out, um, that the, asking the town board to essentially amend the zoning, uh, to, to make it easier to keep chickens so that people don't have to go through all of this variance and special use permit, that it could be a, a, a more, more like a licensing, just making sure that people keep them in a, in a, in a clean and, and actually humane, uh, way. And in the cases that we've considered, there's been, um, little evidence that there have been any negative impacts.
Nothing, nothing's come back to.
In, in fact, we've had a couple cases where, um, neighbors and people in, in the neighborhood have said, that's fine, they actually kind of like having them, I mean, the, the people on Hornbeck Road said they like to walk past the.
Shouldn't this go by the neighborhood feeling?
But Jim, also, the place is spotless, I mean, you gotta give her credit, the place is immaculate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've had neighbors that raise rabbits, and it's much worse than, than chickens.
Yeah.
And, you know, going on with your statements, I know we wanna close this out, but, again, people worry about run off down to the park from feces, et cetera, dogs, cats, nobody cleans their yard well enough to eliminate that. Cat food, dog food outside, it's gonna draw predators, cats outside are gonna draw predators at night, so I don't think this is a big deal.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I agree with Art, and, um, you know, there are no chickens in my neighborhood. However, we, we do have a fox now and then, we have deer, we have raccoons, and, um, I, I think they're, they're going to be in neighborhoods anyway, and I, I'm not so sure they're, they're going to be that attracted to, uh, the, the chicken coop. And, and, and another point would be cleaning up, uh, you know, the, um, maintaining the coop. That, that's part of the education, I would think, with, with the children is to, you know, assign them a job once a week to, to, um, click, clean, clean up the coop. But I, I do, I do respect the.
Those kids are never around, there is no education.
Excuse me? Yeah, but, sorry, there's no further public input, this is, this is strictly a, a deliberation. I'm, I'm sorry, you, you, you had your opportunity.
Yeah, well, I wish I had a lot more before. I also wanna find out how I can go above you people to protest this and appeal your appeal.
Good night, sir.
Thank you very much for your time, it's all three hours of it.
Good night. Okay, um, all right, so, uh, and, uh, the, the, the final thing that I, that I would like to add, and others are welcome to, is that when we were out there, I did notice that along both property lines, there's, there's a considerable amount of vegetation that serves as, as screening. I went out there again today just to, to satisfy my own curiosity, and you can see the, the chicken coop very briefly from the road, but you have to know exactly where to look, and you have to know what, what you're looking for. Um, so that certainly, um, in, in terms of the neighborhood as a whole, most people are never gonna know it's back there, and the chickens are quiet, so, um, okay.
Also, the, they've been there for, for quite a while, and no one mentioned any issue with predatory animals in the time they've been there. It has to be up at least, it must be there at least six months.
Yeah.
Too much.
Well, and people that own, own chickens, you know, do, do whatever they can to keep them away, you know, it's, it's not as if they want to attract them, okay, um.
I mean, I, I think one of the restrictions too, um, if they're out, out of the fenced-in area and wandering around. One of the neighbors mentioned his dog and cat, you know, that was a possible problem. And, um, that they should be supervised, you know, by someone in the family.
Yeah.
They, they let them out of the coop.
A dog or cat running in the neighborhood is, is another issue.
Dogs are required to be kept on leashes.
Yeah, dog's required to be on a leash.
I know.
Yeah, so, so that's a different issue altogether.
Right.
And. It, it would have to be a, a lot tougher cat than mine to take on a chicken.
Did we vote?
No.
No, but we better, okay, so I, I guess it's, it's to you, Carmen.
All righty. Are we, are we voting for the special use permit?
Uh, no, we're, the variance.
Variance.
Okay, variance, all right. I move that the board, uh, approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number?
One.
One. Number one.
One, okay. Um, this, uh, decision is based on a review of the application testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the, the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report. And I think we've already, um, approval is subject to the following conditions, and you.
Okay, let, let's, let's just state those so that we have it as part of the motion, and then we can redo it. Okay, so the conditions are, um, the applicant shall keep no more than. Okay, so the conditions are, the applicant shall keep no more than six chickens, that roosters be prohibited, the coop shall be cleaned at least once a week, all waste that is not used in a garden on the property shall be removed to a site outside the town, and all feed shall be kept in a container or location that is rodent-proof.
I don't think we can say outside the town, because I think recycle depot will probably take it, like that, in a proper manner. No, yes?
What you can say is not stored on the premises.
Yeah.
That's not used in a garden.
Okay, shall be removed.
And properly disposed or disposed of within applicable, according to applicable regulations. Because I honestly don't know whether you can put it in the trash or not. I think you would be able to, but I'm not sure, so.
You put your other pet's feces in the trash?
Right.
I think as long as it's disposed of by, you know, proper agency.
Right, so I think just say.
Proper disposal of property.
Proper disposed, yeah, okay. Okay, that's, I think that's fair. I was a little surprised by the outside of the town as well.
Outside of the town came from last month.
That came up because.
They took it. They voluntarily.
The guy voluntarily take it.
At corners.
Had a farm.
Right, the farm.
Where they actually wanted it. So, okay, all right. So with those conditions, so it's been moved by Carmen.
Okay.
Okay, and there's a second?
The second? Thank you.
Okay, so I think we've discussed this a lot. Unless there's anything more. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal's? Okay, approved, seven zero.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Then, item number two, the special use permit to allow the housing of poultry, specifically chickens, in an existing structure on the property. This is an unlisted action, and so I move that Town of Poughkeepsie ZBA declare itself lead agent for purposes of the environmental review of item number two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm not going to read this out. Our attorney has proposed a detailed environmental statement, but let me just summarize this and by extension incorporating her statement. I move that the Town of Poughkeepsie ZBA finds, based on the questions asked in the environmental assessment short form, as detailed in the document drafted by our attorney, that the action proposed in item number two will have no significant impact on the environment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, and, okay, in terms of the special use permit, there are some specific criteria that have to do with agricultural uses. This is relevant to section 21051. And let me just read out the findings, really, the conclusions. Let's see. Concerning, let's see. Agricultural use on lots with an area of at least five acres. The applicant sought and received a variance from the five-acre lot requirement. Having to do with farm buildings, which must be at least 75 feet from the property line, this is not applicable. Any building devoted to housing rabbits' hairs, guinea pigs, ducks, geese, live poultry or fowl of any kind shall be at least 100 feet from any property line. The applicant states that the existing building meets this criteria. No expansion or change of the location of that building is contemplated or permitted by the variance. Staff should document the size and location of the existing building. If at any time it is found that the structure does not meet this criteria, a variance would be required. Housing of livestock, that's not applicable. And let's see, there's no sale of anything grown on the premises. And animal waste, if any, shall be stored not less than 100 feet from any property line. As a condition of the variance is granted, the board required that the chicken waste be removed from the site. Okay, then there's general requirements that there should be no detrimental effect on the establishment of such use or on the establishment of such use. Board believes that with the conditions imposed, this criteria has been met, that such use will be in harmony with the orderly development of the district. The district and location are already fully developed, no additional buildings, walls, or fences are proposed, and no additional traffic is anticipated. This criteria would be met. Reasonably accessible for fire and police. The proposed change concerns only the use of an existing structure. No additional structures are proposed. This criteria is met. Let's see. The use meets the prescribed requirements for the district in which it's located. The use is permitted upon the granting of this special use permit. No new construction is proposed. Area requirements have been satisfied by the granting of the requested variance. So that criteria is met. And then there are a number of performance standards, many of which simply don't apply. Noise, the board prohibited the keeping of roosters on the property. With that limitation, the keeping of chickens is not anticipated to cause excessive noise. In any event, this is an ongoing condition of approval. Discharge of water, no discharge of water or waste is contemplated. Traffic access, this is really, doesn't apply. Parking, again, this doesn't apply. Interior circulation, that doesn't apply. Landscaping and screening, the use affects only the keeping of fewer than six chickens on the property. There is no parking or service areas. This criteria is met. Character and appearance, the use affects only the keeping of fewer than six chickens on this property. The existing character and appearance of the structures met this criteria. Actually, I'd go further and say that the coop is well-designed and well-constructed and very clean. Historic and natural resources does not apply. Sewage treatment and water supply, the proposed use doesn't impact this requirement. In any case, the property is served by municipal water and sewer. Waste from the chickens is required to be removed from the site. Size and scale, the proposed keeping of no more than six chickens is not hazardous or inconvenient to or incongruous with, and does not conflict with the normal traffic of the neighborhood. The location and height of buildings, et cetera, no new building structures or improvements are proposed. Existing buildings are consistent with the level and type of development found on adjacent and nearby properties. Additional safeguards and conditions, the board conditioned the granting of the variances on the keeping of no more than eight chickens, prohibiting the keeping of any roosters.
Six.
Six, thank you, good catch. Requiring the coop to be kept clean, including cleaning at least once a week. The removal of all waste that is not used in a garden on the property to a, what did we say, properly?
Appropriate facility.
Appropriate facility.
And not stored on site.
Okay. And the storage of the feed in a location or container that is rodent-proof. The building containing the chickens is existing. No changes in the building are proposed or permitted by the granting of the requested variance. Okay, so with those as findings. Okay, where's, where have I, oh, here we go. Okay. I move to approve the request for a special use permit set forth in item number two. This decision is based on review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In the findings as drafted by the town attorney, and which were summarized just earlier, the board finds that the proposed special use permit meets the criteria set forth in the town code. The approval of this special use permit is subject to the conditions outlined at the end of the findings statement. So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this?
No.
No. You have to wonder how long the kids will be interested in this. Cases, you know, this could be so limiting anyway.
You know, you never know. You'd be surprised the number of kind of city and suburban kids that I meet, you know, at the college, who are majoring in biology, want to go into medicine or whatever and say, "You know, I first got interested in biology when I had a pet whatever." And, you know, you know, how exciting is a guinea pig. But, you know, for some kids, it makes a difference. We'll never know, you know, in all hope. Okay, on item number two, the special use permit, there's no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal's? Approved, seven zero.
Oh, she wrote.
Okay.
Number eight, one more.
Yeah, one more.
Actually, we have done four. The only left, one left is eight, okay. Okay, MRR Realty Group, 159 Barnegat Road. This would be a variance to allow a freestanding monument sign to be located at the corner of Barnegat and IBM Road, which is not an entrance to the property. This is an unlisted action. So I move that the Town of Poughkeepsie ZBA declare itself lead agency for the purpose of the environmental review of item number eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The Town of Poughkeepsie ZBA further finds that based on the questions listed in the environmental assessment short form, that the action proposed in item number eight will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, on the variance itself, we have, you didn't.
I didn't draft.
You did, you did not, so we can, we can, we can do that here.
Isn't he coming back?
Hmm?
No.
Number seven is coming back. This is number eight.
Yeah, the reds are coming.
Reddles coming back, but I have the sign.
And the discussion here is, we agreed that that monument sign at the corner
Right.
is an appropriate sign.
Yeah.
They're going to have to figure out whether they want to put arrows or directional or whatever.
And request that, or whatever.
And, but that is, that is actually something that, we can't regulate the content
Right.
of the sign, but, so they'll have to figure out for themselves.
Sometimes we think we can, but we can't.
Sense to me, I don't.
A couple of attorneys ago, I got slapped down when I suggested in a meeting that the way the sign was phrased or something
Right.
was not, and I was saying, "We have freedom of speech."
Mr. Chair, can I just remind you that the applicant agreed to the condition that this sign be in lieu of other entrance signs?
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, let's see. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, the board finds that IBM Road is a commercial road. There are a number of businesses and signs on that. The addition of a monument sign at this corner will have really no undesirable change to the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant could be achieved by some method feasible other than an area variance, the board finds that the location of this sign serves an important purpose of alerting people to the building and to the businesses located there, that placing signs at the entrances would actually make it difficult for people coming down IBM Road to find the proper building. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, yes, it's substantial in the sense that the code prohibits signs not at entrances. It's not substantial in the sense that it is, it doesn't contribute to clutter or unnecessary signage. It serves an important function. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, the board finds that the size, design, and location of the proposed sign are very much consistent and actually are well-designed for the proposed location, considering the nature of the neighboring properties. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, yes, it is self-created in the sense that they're proposing a sign where one doesn't exist. In a sense, it's not self-created because there is, there is a need for locating these businesses. And in any case, this doesn't preclude the granting of the variance. Okay, so with those as the findings, Christine, I guess we're back to you.
Sure, okay. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number eight. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the previously mentioned findings, one through five.
Okay.
In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in the previously noted items, one through five.
Second. Okay, and add as a condition?
And the condition that this sign be in lieu of any other.
Entrance sign.
Entrance sign.
Okay.
Second.
Move.
Okay, and we understand that doesn't, that would not include purely directional signs. Okay, all right. Okay, motion to approve eight has been made and seconded. There's no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, seven zero. Okay, we have, item seven is adjourned to the next meeting, and that concludes our agenda. So if there's no further items, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.